All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Good evening. This is the October 22nd zoning board of adjustment meeting. Tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting as well as audio and video recordings will be available later at Nashua New Hampshire.gov Agenda Center and Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. The chair is going to be late tonight, so I will sit in place until Mr. Shaw gets here. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all of whom wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. So this is more of when we were doing Zoom, so this is not applicable tonight. The board follows the meeting protocols, procedures, and identifies it, is identified in its bylaws. So the way this will work tonight is the applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. Timer is used to manage the speaking time. Mr. Fark of the Planning Department will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. Note that all votes are taken during this meeting. She'll be done by roll call. So again, a lot of people here may not have been to this meeting. The process that we'll use, just again, is applicant will present their case. Those in favor will come up, will ask for those people to come up. You'll have some time to speak. And then those people of opposition will speak, and then the applicant will have opportunity to come back and rebut anything that was spoken to. And then if there was a large, if there was some opposition, again, the opposition will have the last word, but only one person will be able to come up to do that. Tonight, we will be hearing, we have both, we both have, right?
Yeah, two variances, two socials.
So tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviation from the National Zoning Code in the form of application for special exceptions and variances. So a special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, the board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have a right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can again contact Mr. Fark in the Planning Department for more information. So for this, for tonight's meeting, we have the following in attendance. Mr. Jay McCarra, a full-time member, Mr. Josh Neely, a full-time member, myself, JP Boucher. We have Mr. Andrew Sylvia, who's an alternate, and Mr., sorry, Joe Patry is also an alternate. Down on the, on the floor, the table sitting from left to right, my left to right is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the deputy planning manager. We have Ms. Kate Poria from the Planning Department and Nicole Wilkins. Mr. Fark, is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, there are none.
Okay, so right now, I will take roll call from the board. Mr. Jay McCarra.
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely.
Present.
Mr. Joseph Patry.
Present.
Ms. Andrew Sylvia.
Present.
And myself, JP Boucher. So again, as I spoke to Mr. Shaw, our chair is running late, so when he comes, he'll take over. In the meantime, I will officiate the meeting. Mr. Sylvia?
Yes, I have a comment for folks in the audience and also watching. For variances, the five criteria that the chair mentioned can be found in New Hampshire RSA 674:33, in case you didn't know that. And for the special exceptions, that can be found in National Revised Ordinance 190-134. And the fourth criteria of that for wetlands is 190-15B.
Okay, thank you. And again, when Mr. Shaw arrives, we'll let you know what we're going to do because we can only have five voting members. So we have five members now when Mr. Shaw arrives. Then we'll let you know which alternate member will be voting on the case when he arrives. With that, I will call the first case, read it for the record, the first case. This is for Joseph and Lisa Law, 25 Pelham Street. Description is Joseph P. and Lisa A. Law, owners of 25 Pelham Street, Sheet F, Lot 247, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, Section E, Subsection 1, to maintain existing maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 36 feet existing. It's in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present that case? Come on up, and what you'll do is you'll give your name, name and address. And again, I just want to remind everybody before we get started, sorry, sorry, folks. The acoustics are really good in this room. If you need to have a conversation, we'd ask that you step out into the hall. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
Joseph Law.
Address.
Of 25 Pelham Street, Nashua.
Okay, all right.
I'm Lisa A. Law, 25 Pelham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. In December 2015, my husband and I purchased a property at 25 Pelham Street, Nashua. We moved in, we discovered that when we moved in, rain, when it rained hard, three quarters of our driveway that was already existing would flood. And we did call the DBW to no avail. So we decided we're going to repave the driveway. We hired a company to do it. We assumed that most paving companies pulled the permits for us, but we found out a permit wasn't pulled. We installed the new driveway between, and between 24 and 26 Pelham Street, there was a drain that the city removed. They redid the road after we put in our driveway, they raised the street a little bit, they removed the drain. The end of our driveway still flooded. In fact, I pitched it to show the end of my driveway destroyed from the weather. The road continued to flood. We reduced half amount of water that would come into our driveway. Now only a quarter of the water comes in our driveway, and my front yard no longer floods. The road continued to flood, after driveway, pencheck would come out and bleed the hydrant once a year. Well, one night, they flooded it, they flooded my whole driveway and my, half of my front yard. And I said, hey, 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 I go, you flooded my yard. So now when they come out, they do it to a drain across from the hydrant. We do have two drains on our street, ones at the, when the street starts in my section in the corner of Natick and Pelham, but it's in the ground and then there's a hill. Just here for us, the next drain is the next house over on 29 Pelham Street, and they do their best to keep that drain clean. When it rains and when it's in the winter, we literally, either with our plow or with water, have to push all the muck off down the street. But putting in this driveway made it easier for us that we're not flooding as much anymore. So we are asking for a variance. And the DBW did come out, because they finally came out last year and took measurements of the street and everything. That's how you guys were notified. We were told that no more drains could be put in because it could, the watershed couldn't handle it. My argument on that, and I'm not trying to be fresh or anything or disrespectful, they said the watershed can't handle any more drains, but on Broad, Broad Street, okay, across from the electrical place, they put in two more drains next to one. So there's three drains there where the water never goes up to there, but yet our street floods, and we try and do what we can to prevent, to prevent our property, because if that water ever came into my house or in my garage, my insurance is not going to cover it, because it's outside water. Only covers drains in your house. So I am asking, please, we are asking requests for the variance. Thank you.
When did the driveway get cased? What year?
Do you remember what year?
Twenty...
Five years?
It's been 2018.
2018, okay.
2018. We had put an addition on the back of the house, and we obviously had the permits for that. The building inspector, I had asked him about the driveway, and he goes, I don't, he says, I don't care what you do with that, that's not my problem, or something to that effect. So we didn't know we needed a permit until that nice young lady over there told me we need, I was like, oh my God, I didn't know we needed one, or we would have pulled one, but we didn't know. So I winded, because what happened was every time you park a car there, it would go three inches down.
Can you talk, sorry, can you just talk into the mic? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would go three inches down, so everything would be muddy, and she's a terminally ill patient. So I was worried, because she just had a stem cell transplant, that if she fell, that could be really bad for her health. She's still taking, she took chemo yesterday. So I'm, we're just worried about that. So we're not, we didn't intentionally try to do anything to hurt anyone. The driveway's wide, there's nothing wrong with it, it looks great. Yeah, and I know the town has pictures where the street is completely dry, and we got two inches of water in our driveway two days later. The town has the pictures, because I actually saw them. So they, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that the town knows there was a problem, but nobody helped us, so we did it ourselves. We just tried to do everything we could to. And now the driveway's completely destroyed again, and I have to redo that driveway again at a future date, because it's all cracked and broken down at the end of the driveway. I mean, you know, I have neighbors that know that, you know, so we're not trying to do anything to hurt anything, it's just, we want to make it safe, because we're getting old, so we're not young kids anymore. So, and we bought that to retire and be there, so that's kind of where we're at with it.
Mr. Andrew, Mr. Sylvia had a question.
Yes, yes.
I know we got correspondence from your, your neighbor on your right-hand side in support of this application, but it looked like on the map that the driveway was closer to the left-hand side neighbor, the 9 Natick Street neighbor, is that correct?
Yes.
Did they, oh, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering if they had any opinion.
I got a letter from her, too. I sent it from her.
Oh, perfect. I was just curious what they thought about this.
The neighbor to the right side, which is on the corner.
Yeah, we got the letter from them, just wondering about the left side.
Yeah, no issues whatsoever with them. They're, actually, they're very happy, because it's not as muddy on their side either.
Thank you.
No one on the street is, no one, none of our neighbors have ever complained about our driveway.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neely?
The, the letter from the City of Nashua that was attached to the packet, what brought about that visit?
The DBW you notified to.
Well, we complained, because the driver was just constantly, you know, watering there all the time. And we asked them, can you come down and fix it? So finally, after a year of, maybe two years actually, of hounding them a little, they came down one day in a truck, and I could see them pointing. I'm like, what are they doing? And they were pointing at what we did wrong and not what was wrong. And then the next thing you know, two or three months ago, I get this letter in the mail going, what's this for? You know, I've had my driveway in for five or six years. Not an issue, not a problem until that happened. So they kind of went after us. And I'm like, why are they doing that? I didn't do anything wrong. So this is where we're at with it. We don't, we don't know what to do now.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCarr.
So is it fair to assume that the area where you expanded the driveway is dry?
It's not completely, but it's better, yes. Yes. It's not coming up to our garage doors where we got to replace the bottoms anymore, which is what we're worried about.
There's no dirt or mud. There is, there is a grassed area on the side of the driveway, and you probably can see in the photos that there's plants there.
Yeah, we left it so that we could have the grass here, because we knew there had to be something. So we left it, we didn't bring it all the way over or anything, we just did it enough to try to keep the water away. And I think it was another 12 or 15 feet, whatever it was.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Just want to take pause for a minute, I just want to recognize Mr. Shaw's here. Mr. Shaw, did you want to participate in this case?
No, like, since there's already five of you, and since I missed the first part, I think we're just about to have the U5 filled on it. I might ask a question or two.
Sure. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Come on up, just give us your name and address and tell us.
Hello, my name is Russell Brown. I live at 29 Pelham Street, right next door. The storm drain is actually in front of my house. I've lived there for 35 years, and there's always been a drainage problem right there. I don't know, five, 15 years ago, I don't know when they redid the street, but they were going to solve that problem, but it, they didn't. They made it better, but it didn't go away. So I just, that's kind of all I have to say.
Any questions for, thank you very much for coming. Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, I want to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
So I did a drive-by on a, on a dry day, and, and really questioned why this, this driveway had to be so wide. It's not often we see a driveway this wide, it looks like it could fit about six to eight cars. So I do believe that the testimony was eye-opening, that there is a flooding issue down there. This, this is really why the zoning board exists, in my opinion, is to look at these special cases. The fact that these folks have a, have a safety issue, you know, if it's flooding during rain, I can just imagine the snow melt. And, you know, they made some testimony, they're concerned about the water getting into the house, replacing the door in the garage. We have support of the neighbors on both sides who, who attested to the same issue with the, the lack of drainage. You know, these folks did talk about the DPWs, as the watershed cannot handle any more drainage. You know, for those reasons, I, I support this application. These folks are just looking for some type of help to, to ensure that their, their property's not flooding.
Mr. McCar.
I, I would agree with Mr. Neely's comments and just add that I do see the flooding as a special condition on the property, and that the inability to, or the need to widen the driveway, you know, is obviously to have a place to park the cars, which is out of the water. And realistically, you can't remove pavement from in front of the garages, so there really is no other alternative that I could see. So for those reasons, I think it's a reasonable request.
And I'll also note that, that the driveways existed for six, six years. And again, the, the issue with safety in the rain, I think it really makes the case for me in this case here. But again, driveway's existed for six years, and there's really been no recorded complaints about that. So I think that it's, at this point, fits into the, to the neighborhood. Any other comments?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Neely?
Mr. Sylvia, you got to have the other one.
Okay. All right. In the case of Joseph P. and Lisa A. Law, owners 25 Pelham Street, Sheet F, Lot 247, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1, to maintain existing maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 36 feet existing, in the R9 zone, Ward 1. We find these findings affect. One, a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. As Mr. McCarra mentioned, the flooding is a significant issue at this property, and there's no other way to mitigate that other than pursuing this path. Number two, it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the ordinance would like to make sure all of our residents don't have to deal with flooding. Number three, it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We heard from the abutting neighbors, and they seem to be in support of this. Number four, it's not contrary to the public interest. Again, flooding is probably not in anyone's interest. And number five, this does substantial justice, because this will help the landowners get the maximum value for their property. So I move in favor of granting this variance.
Second, Mr. McCar, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Be aware that there is a 30-day window of appeal, but in this case, the driveway is already existing. So thank you very much for coming, and you're all set.
Thank you.
So with that, with that, I'll close case number one and hand over the meeting to Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Sorry again about, sorry for my lateness. Trying to get out of Manchester even with 20 minutes extra, it didn't work out so well. We'll go to case number two, is the owner Woodlands at Nashua LLC. The applicant is Metro Sign and Awning. The address is 3 Sapling Circle, Sheet A, Lot 27. The request is for the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7. First, to exceed maximum number of ground signs where one is permitted, two are proposed. Number two, to exceed maximum ground sign area, 10 square feet permitted, a total of 59.57 square feet is proposed. Number three, to approach, to encroach nine feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback for both proposed signs. Number four, to exceed maximum ground sign height for a proposed sign at location number one of six feet, where six feet is permitted, seven feet, three inches is proposed. And number five, to encroach into ground sign setback from intersecting right-of-ways where 25 feet is required, 10 feet is proposed for both ground signs. This is in the RC zone, Ward 8. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Mr. Chair, a point of order. Who's going to be voting, is it me or Mr. Patrick?
It'll be you, Mr. Sylvia, and then we'll switch back and forth. But Mr. Patry will participate in, in all the, the meeting, and just for the audience, if that wasn't noted before my arrival, that both alternates will participate throughout other than the actual voting. So that's the only real difference in their participation in those cases. This case will be Mr. Sylvia, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there somebody here? Yes, so please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about the case.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Liz Bastid. I work for Metro Sign and Awning. We represent Campbell Communities, which owns Woodlands at Nashua, located at 3 Sapling Circle in Nashua. And we are asking for a variance, a number of variances, for the sign is located at that property. We've been helping Campbell Communities out with a number of, they've rebranded this year. We've worked all over Massachusetts and New Hampshire to rebrand all their various properties. Their branding is now being continued across all of their various locations. So there is currently one sign there, it's very old, very outdated, and we are asking to replace that sign and put a second sign at the further entrance. And the variances would allow us to put a second sign, make the signs a little bit larger than code allows, and we'd like to put them closer to the road in order to make them more visible to traffic looking for those, for that property.
All right. I'll jump in a couple things. So the location where the existing sign is, is the, is this one of the signs that's replacing that going in the exact same spot?
It isn't, we're hoping to put it closer to the road, because right now, the way the land lies, the, the land slopes from the main road, so it's, it's kind of down the hill and a little hard to see from the road.
And the size of that sign, is it, I'm assuming it's greater than the allowed 10 square feet?
Yeah, the current sign is also a little larger than allowed. When we looked into this, we weren't involved with the original signage, but when we looked into it, it does not seem like that original signage was permitted.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Are there questions from the board? All right, seeing none, I guess you can have a seat, and we'll see if anybody else wants to provide any testimony. Is there anybody present who would like to speak to these various sign variance requests at 3 Sapling Circle for the Woodlands at Nashua? Seeing none, is there anybody that has questions, concerns, or opposition regarding this 3 Sapling Circle application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any thoughts? Mr. Sylvia?
This application seems comparable to one we had a few months ago just down the street at that senior citizen home complex on Spitbrook, and also in the packet, it looked like the signage was comparable to their neighbors. So I would probably support this.
Mr. McCarr?
Thank you. I also support the application. I, I think that the signage within the context of the area is reasonable. It's not out of character in terms of size or location than what we see on surrounding sites. I do think it's within the spirit of the ordinance, because it's, you know, signage is necessary to identify the entrances to the site, given the amount of traffic and the speeds on Spitbrook Road. You know, pretty clearly, you need to be able to see the signs rather quickly and clearly. So I definitely think it's within the public interest as well, again, consistent with the character of the area, and I, I think the purpose of the, you know, the sign ordinance is met, so I support the application.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll also note that this is one of those places that I've driven by probably literally thousands of times, and I'm not sure how well I ever really understood that there were the two entrances, and the fact that there are, but because of the way the signage is, and, and I think that's sloped down, I think it, this is, actually, I think will be very beneficial. I mean, obviously, to some extent, the fact that there's two entrances and the way it just loops kind of through, somebody could still then, but the thing is, if they go past the first sign, regardless of which direction, they might be like, oh, there's still another entrance, which right now, you might not be able to do, and I forget which direction that would work in your favor possibly, but you still wouldn't necessarily even know there's a second entrance. So I think that's the kind of thing that this will go to help. I think the total square footage of the signs is actually relatively modest, and like you already noted, consistent with other signs in the area. So I think this, this seems like the kind of thing where it's, it's actually very much beneficial to the public interest, so I'm very much in support. Any other comments, or anybody like to offer a motion? Mr. McCarr? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Metro Sign and Awning at 3 Sapling Circle for the Woodlands at Nashua LLC, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-101, Table 101-7. One, to exceed maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, two proposed. Two, to exceed maximum ground sign area, 10 square feet permitted, a total of 59.57 square feet proposed. Three, to encroach nine feet into the 10-foot required front yard setback for both proposed signs. Four, to exceed the maximum ground sign height for proposed sign at location number one, as shown in the application. Six feet permitted, seven feet, three inches proposed. And five, to encroach into the ground sign setback from intersecting right-of-ways, 25 feet required, 10 feet proposed for both ground signs. This is in the RC zone in Ward 8. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that the benefits sought by the application cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that, given the location of the property on Spitbrook Road, which is a very busy road with relatively high speeds, requires signage that is visible from the road, two signs are necessary to identify... identify the two entrances. And given the setbacks from the road, the width of the right-of-way being closer is reasonable. Therefore, what is requested is reasonable. We find that it is within spirit and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of the signage ordinance is to obviously allow signage that properly identifies sites and locations and provides for the public safety. This would do that. We don't believe the signs would adversely affect the values of surrounding parcels. There was no testimony to that effect. It's not contrary to the public interest. In fact, the public interest would be advanced. It's also, I would add, consistent with the overall character of the area. There's a lot of signage within the area that's of similar size and setback, and finally, substantial justice would be done.
Is there a second? Mr. Neely, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously, five-zero. There is the possibility of a rehearing to request appeal, but in the 30-day window, it seems unlikely at this point. And you're welcome to proceed with your, your plan as is. If you have any questions, you can contact Mr. Falk in the planning department. And good luck. Thank you. All right, we'll close, closes number two, and we'll move to case number three. The owner, owners is Wild Rose Condos and Mahmood Kabusi, Land Pine Hill Road and 23 Wild Rose Drive, Sheet F, Lot 33. The request is for a special exception from land use code Section 190-112 to work in a 40-foot other wetland buffer to plant six trees. This is in the R30 PRD Zone, Ward 1. Welcome, and I apologize if I didn't do a good job of pronouncing your name.
No, you did perfectly fine. Hi, I'm Mahmood Kabusi, and I'm the owner of 23 Wild Rose Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063. Requesting your permission to plant six trees that were locally sourced from Country Brook Farm in Hudson. These are the same type of species that exist already in the backyard. They are approximately six foot tall, inch and a half in diameter. They come in a five to eight gallon bucket, so they're very easy. Obviously, the back of the house bordering wetland buffer zone, there would be no mechanical tool or machinery used. It would be hand dug by landscaper, prepped, planted, watered. Just requesting to plant six trees. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? This pretty much seems to follow the stipulation from the Conservation Commission, so I don't think there's anything additional that you need to adhere to, so.
The only request, if I may ask, is to get my application money back, because it's really a good deed. I'm just planting six trees. I don't know if that's possible or not.
We have nothing to do with the money. We just, we just got to make the decisions as far as the case is up or down, but we can't help you with the money, sorry. I think the board doesn't have any questions, so you can have a seat. We'll see if anybody else has any testimony?
Actually, just one.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one question. Sorry, you can come back. Just, there is one question.
You may have mentioned it.
That's fine.
You are aware of the wetland special conditions?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think directly, so thank you.
Okay, so is there anybody else present who would like to speak in favor of the request, the special exception request for Land Pine Hill Road and 23 Wild Rose Drive? Okay, is there anybody here that would like to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Any initial comments? Mr. Sylvia?
Just a grammatical thing on the description here. It's condos, singular, with a little apostrophe before the S. I don't know if that was a typo or intentional.
Oh, it's not possessive. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We can, we can check that in the minutes, I guess.
Yeah.
Also, just to thank you, Mr. Kabusi, for coming and doing the right thing.
And also, just for the record again, Mr. Patrick is voting on this case.
Yeah.
Seems extremely straightforward. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Wild Rose Condos, not possessive, and Mahmood Kabusi owners, L as in Land Pine Hill Road and 23 Wild Rose Drive, Sheet F, Lot 33, requesting a special exception from land use code Section 190-112 to work in a 40-foot other wetland buffer to plant six trees. This is located in the R30 Zone, PRD Zone, in Ward 1. This is listed in the table of uses. As the board quickly discussed, this is just the planting of a few trees. Basically, is going to be writing a condition that was found by the city that needed to be rectified. There is certainly no undue traffic congestion or pedestrian safety, as all the work will be done by hand behind the house. This is located on a cul-de-sac, so a very quiet neighborhood for this to happen. This will not overload public water, drainage sewer, or other municipal systems. There are no municipal systems that will be affected in any way by the planting of these trees. The special regulations are fulfilled. The applicant did testify that the special conditions that are normally stipulated in the packet will be taken care of, as noted by the Conservation Commission. This will not impair the integrity or be out of character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. Once again, as noted, this is near a wetlands. Looks like the trees were taken down potentially by accident. And as noted by the city and the Conservation Commission, these trees are going to be replacing and basically rectifying an incident that happened there. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the, the special exception.
And is there a second? Mr. Patrick, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously, five-zero. Please feel free to go ahead with your work. There is that possibility of 30-day window appeal. Again, seems highly unlikely, so good luck, and hope those trees thrive. All right. Case number four. City of Nashua owner. The address is Land Spitbrook Road, Robey Park, Sheet B, Lot 2189. The request is for a special exception from land use codes, one, sections 190-134 and 190-112, to work in a critical wetland buffer to remove trees and brush, install nine wooden pedestrian bridges, tee pads, disc chain baskets, directional signage, wetland markers, and trash barrels for a proposed 18-hole disc golf course. This is in the R18 Zone, Ward 9. Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Andrew Pearlman, with Prunia and Pearlman, here in Nashua, here for the city. Mr. Chairman, I know we're time-sensitive tonight. I want to stick to my 15 minutes. Ms. Foto has a brief introduction, and then I want to have my 15 minutes of the presentation, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Foto, and I've served as Nashua's Director of Public Works for the last 14 years. Thank you for the opportunity to present our application again this evening. Of the many projects I've led during my tenure with the city, disc golf has by far the greatest potential to enrich the lives of all of our residents. It is free, can be played at any age, and allows our residents to experience the beauty of a wooded area in Robey Park. This project started with a petition of over 600 Nashua residents asking the city to build a disc golf course. When these discussions began back in 2020, I had never heard of disc golf, but came to realize the popularity of the sport with over 71 disc golf courses right here in New Hampshire. Disc golf courses are built in harmony with the surroundings and are designed to protect the natural resources. The Board of Public Works and the mayor unanimously support this project. We have worked to address many of the Conservation Commission concerns. I want to thank Conservation Commission Chair Sherry Dutzy for voting for this project and working with us to move it forward. Joining me this evening are Attorney Andrew Pearlman, who you just met, Wetland Scientist from Gove Environmental, Brendan Quigley, and Nashua's City Engineer, Dan Hudson. Our team is here to answer your questions and hopefully work with you to bring the Rotary West Disc Golf Park to Nashua. Attorney Pearlman will now present our application on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, Attorney with Prunia and Pearlman here in Nashua, here on behalf of the City of Nashua and the Department of Public Works. We are here presenting the Rotary West Disc Golf Course in Robey Park. We were here not too long ago, back in June 25th. This board had a long night of a lot of testimony, a lot of evidence, and ultimately, we had the project approved, the wetland special exception we're requesting. Unfortunately, we collectively missed some of the butter notices, so that brings us back here tonight. Brendan Quigley is here to speak to environmental issues. Betsy Hood is here from Rotary West. She's the president of Rotary West. She may have to duck out, she's going to get appointed downstairs for a committee, but if we have questions, maybe we can grab Betsy for any questions from Rotary West. We incorporate all prior letters and testimonies and emails and statements that were supplied before. Should this matter move forward, we will be going to the planning board to address, you know, the issues, typical planning, planning board issues, parking and traffic. We are proposing a disc golf course in the southern portion of Robey Park. Robey Park is a public park acquired by the city in 1982, 1983. As a park, it's actively used all seasons. Recreational uses are permitted uses in the R18 District, so we have a permitted use. We are here for the wetland special exception. The city is proposing the, another amenity to add to Robey Park, being the disc golf, the 18-hole disc golf course that you've seen in our plans. The plans that were prepared under the supervision of Professional Engineer Daniel Hudson for the city, they originally dated September 2022, and then they were revised in, dated November 20, November 22nd, 2022, which are the plans that you have before you, and they were revised as a result of ongoing discussions with the Conservation Commission at that time. The Conservation Commission was concerned about wetland crossings of Old Main's Brook, well, the trail network that we were proposing. So as a result, trails were consolidated, bridges were added, holes were moved further away from wetlands. And so the plans that are before you tonight are dated November 22, 2023. In my packet of that, that we included, we have the Conservation Commission letter. The states, although it was a 2-2 vote at the Conservation Commission, that equates to a negative recommendation to this board, but ultimately, it was a 2-2 vote of the Conservation Commission. If it seems I'm going fast, I'm trying to get to all my points within my 15 minutes. The board may recall, I think everyone is here except for Mr. McCarron, the information that we, that we provided about disc golf, in my application packet, I have a narrative describing disc golf, and I have a bunch of pictures that show various aspects of disc golf. You may recall that there was a concern about if frisbees go in, or discs rather, go into some wetland areas or into the buffers, that I had a demonstration of the retriever that, and I got no applause from the, a very packed room, very disappointing, but there are ways to withdraw discs from out of the buffer, out of the wetland areas. The, as mentioned by Ms. Foto, disc golf is a family-friendly activity, free to play, except for the cost of your discs, your retriever, and your backpacks. The standard course is 18 holes. There are tee boxes like regular golf, and there are many different types of, different weight discs, depending where you are on any particular hole. Avery Jenkins, who designed the course along with his friend Simon Lozot, Avery could not be here tonight, but he provided testimony before where he indicated that he was very much involved with Brendan Quigley from Gove and the city in designing the course and taking advantage of the topography and avoiding wetlands and the buffers as much as possible. The plans, as they were developed and refined, have minimal, minimal wetland and buffer impact as possible, which I'll get into, and Brendan can get into a little bit as well. Again, we are working with a public park. This is not pristine conservation land. This is not untouched land. It's very active, actively used park in the City of Nashua. We have proposed conditions. We have proposed rules and regulations that are part of the whole packet. In my application, we have the application itself addressing the, the, excuse me, the five criteria, the purpose of the request. But then the heart of our application really gets into land use code Section 190-134 and 190-115B. 190-134, the five criteria for the special exception. We are permitted, by special exception, the land use code, Section A. We don't believe that we're going to have any undue traffic concerns or pedestrian safety. We're going to be using the parking lots. We believe that we have sufficient parking for the golf, excuse me, the disc golf use. And if we don't have sufficient parking, DPW is going to have to add parking, right? And again, that's part of the planning process. They tell me there's room to expand parking at Robey Park. And so, but we believe there's sufficient parking, because remember, not everybody showed up, shows up at the same time. This is the type of use that kind of turns over over the day. And when there are tournaments, I watched tournaments up in Manchester, there's time, time, tee times, so you don't show up, everybody doesn't show up at 8:00 AM. Everybody shows up over, over the course of a couple hours. So we believe there's sufficient parking, a normal parking, just pulling into the two parking lots at Robey Park. We have no, the request will not overload public water, drainage, sewer. We don't have any impact there. We have the wetlands affidavit coming in in a second. We believe that we are going to be staying character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a mix of uses, single-family homes, condos, apartments, retail, all around, the Sheraton Hotel, and the park itself. And the park itself has many different uses within the park, and we're simply adding one use to Moving on to the wetland special exception criteria, we have nine criteria, and you have that, all of that in my application. I can read every, every word of this. We believe that what we're proposing and the mitigation measures that we're using with respect to bridges and minimizing the crosses, the wetland crossings, that we have minimized the attendant impacts, which cannot be reasonably avoided. The least damaging route and methodology have been proposed, again, working with Conservation Commission as best we could. We have the set of plans from DPW that address where bridges are going to go, minimizing the impact. And it's, it's mostly just buffer impact. We're really not touching any wetland themselves. We're just have some buffer impacts where the bridge is going to be located. We have reasonable acceptable mitigation measures, again, throughout the, throughout the course. We're going to have buffer markers, some con-con buffer markers. We're going to have them. We're proposing every 40 feet or so. If you want it tightened up to, you know, fewer feet, that's fine. But we're going to have enough markers so people know where they are on the course and to stay out of wetland areas. We're proposing a reasonable use of the land. We have no significant impact to rare endangered species. We have the report from Mr. Quigley, who checked in with the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau, as highly, and the quote is, "It's highly unlikely any special species are present." We don't have any impact of roadways, adjacent drainage basins, a large infrastructure proposed with this, proposal of this application. Just running down the criteria, Mr. Chairman. We don't see any buffer or land impactful, not significantly impacting wildlife or fishery habitats. The banks and the streams are not going to be affected by this application, and the hydro, hydraulic absorption capacity will not going to be impacted at all. Included in my packet are the two reports from Gove Environmental, and I specifically call your attention to the second report of November 27, 2023, which summarizes that with the implementation of the cutting of the course itself, and it's going to be done very fine-tuned by, by hand, and the, there's an additional planting schedule you'll see in the, on the plan, on the plan pages. Mr. Quigley, you know, concludes that there are, while there are minor additional tree cuttings and pruning of bushes necessary, all this will have little to no impact on the wetlands themselves, right? And again, Mr. Quigley is here to... And again, Mr. Quigley is here to, to address those concerns. And then the remainder of my packet is self-explanatory. We have the proposed conditions of approval that we really took from Concom, and we present them here for you tonight. We have rules of the park that, working with Rotary West, we have, trying to make this a fun, family-friendly use of the park. We have the, again, Concom letters, a couple of pictures of what these look like, and then we have the letter from Mr. Falk approving from our June meeting, and then meeting minutes from our June 25th meeting. As Chairman, you will recall, and board members will recall, there was significant support for this application. The link that's on the ZBA webpage has letters from Rotary West, it has the mayor's letter from June 20th, 2024. I will tell you that on August 22nd, 2021, the Board of Public Works voted in favor of this application. The city has been working directly with Gate City Disc Golf, it's a group supporting this application, and they've been working closely with the city in laying out the course. Dozens came out on June 25th, and hundreds, as you heard from Ms. Foto, supported petition to the city. Mr. Chairman, we recognize there's a lot of opposition to this application, and I've had, I've had the opportunity, opportunity to review the rehearing requests, three minutes. And I will, I will tell you that, you know, I honestly didn't see much of anything new in the rehearing request, with one exception. We have, we received a letter from the Dunstable Rural Land Trust, that I thought was a very polite and thoughtful letter, and they were really saying, please, please be mindful of the wetlands, please be mindful of the, of the natural settings. We believe that we are with the application that's before you. I'll wrap up, Mr. Chairman, by a couple, with a couple of points. You may recall last time I was here, and I said, if I could, I'd like to briefly testify as a witness, because since I got involved with this project, I've been to a bunch, well, not a bunch, I've been to a handful of disc golf courses in Manchester and Massachusetts, and I can tell you that they all have wetlands in them, the streams, you can't find 20 acres in a community today without having some wetland areas. They are all families and friends of all ages, little kids running around chasing the discs to, you know, grandparents, you know, chasing after the little ones. They're all on city or town or land, they all were respectful, there were signs, I didn't see wetland impacts, I didn't see people running through the brooks or streams. I see a very supportive culture with the disc players who are respectful of what, and they're grateful for what cities and towns provide, and it's all free. We have a city proposal, a city on land that's allowed, it's an allowed use, we have a wetland special exception, we believe we meet the criteria for the wetland special exception, and again, we ask for your support. I'm happy answering your questions, we have some other folks who want to talk.
First, I just want to make sure, I should have done it at the very beginning, even though it kind of, that Mr. Sylvia will be the voting member on this case. And Attorney Prommen, my, just one question, I wanted to also just kind of double check that there are no actual changes from what was previously presented in late June as far as this application, right? There's, there's no, no changes in any of the proposal or design or anything, right?
Same, 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 same everything.
Just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sylvia, and then I know Mr. McCarr.
Got a few questions here. Just to refresh my memory, for, I know the disc golf community is very tight-knit and follows rules, but would there be those reacher poles at each hole, just in case anybody didn't bring them with them?
No, they are carried by the players themselves.
So if a player doesn't bring one, what would they do to get the disc out of the wetlands?
Well, Mr. Sylvia, I'm not going to tell you that no one will ever go into a buffer, right? No one will ever walk into a wetland, it's just not, it's not really, not real to say that. But where, what I have seen and what I know from the disc crowd, and people could correct me if I'm wrong, is that where a disc goes deep into water or deep into trees and they can't get it, they leave it there. Because then, and then over the course of the season, they get, they get collected, and they either go to, the disc either go to Breaking Chains, which is a retail shop up in Manchester, and there's, they hope to have one in Nashua, or I think I have a picture of a lost and found, little kiosk-type thing, and just so discs over, over the course of the season will get picked up and, and returned to the owner. But what I have seen is that out of a foursome, or out of a couple people playing together, one of those people will have a retriever. Okay? I can't guarantee that, but that's what I've seen.
That's what usually happens.
Yeah.
Another question for you. I was looking at the, the map, and it looked like there was some distance between the end of the sixth hole and the beginning of the seventh hole. Do you know how long the path is in between those two?
I, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to dig that out, perhaps Mr. Hudson can help us with that.
Okay.
But I, just, give me a minute, I'll, I'll, I may come back to answer that. What'd you say, that between the sixth and seventh?
The sixth and the seventh seem like they were the furthest apart.
Okay. I'll, I'll take a look.
So perhaps I should have gleaned this better from the application itself, but you, could you briefly describe for me the extent of wetland buffer impacts beyond the bridges themselves, if any?
Mr. McCarr, in terms of square footage, I can't give that off, give that to you off the top of my head. Again, Mr. Hudson may be able to help us out with that.
I don't need square footage, I just need to kind of understand the scope.
Well, the, so if you look at the plans, and, and, and I will say that the, back in 2021, the city got ahead of itself by getting out there and doing some work without, without permits or approvals, right? But we also know that a lot of that has grown back. We know that from DES, and just, you know, we've had another season altogether. But the, but if you look at the plans, you can see that there are pathways that lead to the bridges, and some of those pathways in themselves may be in a buffer, but doesn't hit any wetlands, it just hits the, hits the bridge, and it's, the holes are designed to be trimmed back to like 10 or 15 feet wide. And remember, if the disc golf players like the trees, they like the challenge of turning a disc, I don't know how they do it, right, but they like the, they like the hills, they like the terrain, makes a better course. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but the whole intent is to, as you approach a wetland, as you approach a buffer, to kind of funnel people toward the bridge on the walkways leading to the bridge, if that helps. And I, you know, I could get a better answer for you.
And just as a follow-up, so is, is it fair to assume that, again, for the structures of the bridges themselves, areas that would be cleared would be largely, if not entirely, pervious and, to some extent, vegetated?
Yes, yes. There was some comments in, in the, in a reconsideration request that we're going to block out of impervious area, we're not. You know, there'll be concrete into the ground to hold the baskets, there'll be concrete, well, probably not much more, maybe to hold some signs, but really not a lot. So everything, the tee boxes themselves, I've seen concrete tee boxes, I've seen pestoning tee boxes, we just have compact dirt here, it's no impervious. So Dan Hudson.
Good evening, Dan Hudson, City Engineer. So it's approximately 430 feet is what I scaled off the plan today with my scale, so those are separated by a distance, but that was intentional to avoid the wetland area, keep the holes away from those areas. So, so yeah, there'll be obviously some markers, how to get from each hole to the next hole, that's approximately the distance.
Thank you.
Other question, Mr. Neil?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have a couple of questions, including one for Mr. Hudson, going to come back up, just when you get comfortable. So, so I do use that area, those trails, I know them, I know them quite well. In this past spring, we had had so much precipitation in the January, February, March timeframe, we were about five inches over normal rainfall, I mean, there was just a ton of, of water back there. When I take a walk back there now, I can see where everything, where all the little flags are, the stakes. Does this plan take into effect the, the higher precipitation months, or was this, I'm concerned it's really dry back there now, and we're, and we're looking at, at the wetlands of what it is now versus back in April when, when everything was completely waterlogged?
Sure, so I think it was approximately April, maybe two years ago, and when the, you know, there was clearing happening, and the issue came up that, you know, we needed to go through the proper steps, obviously, of getting that work approved in the buffer. So that's when this plan came about, we went out and documented everything at that time. So that was, that was, that was April of two years ago. Obviously, things changed seasonally last, not this summer, but summer before, we had a very wet summer. So yeah, I mean, it was really, it's, it's designed for average conditions, I mean, there may be times that we need to close the course because the water's too high, that's certainly a possibility, but no, it's, it's, it's to, to address what we perceive as normal conditions.
And I think, since you're here, one last question, I think for you, or maybe the counselor. How many bridges total are we talking about? When I look at the plans, I see just a bunch of lines going everywhere, how many actual crossings of wetlands are happening via bridge? And where are those bridges coming from? Because somebody had alluded in the packet somewhere that there was a generic download from an internet somewhere, and these really weren't what the bridges were made out of. Can you kind of talk us through that a little bit, what exactly they're made of, where are they coming from, what's the plan there?
Sure, so I don't have the count handy, I know there's nine bridges, okay, thank you, it's been a while. And some of those bridges were to replace existing crossings, that crossing wasn't, wasn't very, very nice in terms of, you know, a log or two in the wetland, right? So we're trying to, we were asked by the Conservation Commission, we're trying to approve those crossings. So some of those are for that reason. The bridges, there's details in the plan set, but the bridges are standard trail crossing, bridges, you know, we, we have to go to planning board and, and we'll finalize some of the designs of those, but what we're showing in the documents here are standard for service wetland crossings, basically. We're, you know, limiting any clearing in these buffer areas to 10 feet wide in the future via hand pruning, as noted, so these bridges will be on anywhere five feet wide. And then, and we place them to span the narrowest points of wetland, along the wetland, to try to minimize impacts and make those easier. And we have, you know, the layout, a couple holes share bridges in certain locations to, again, try to minimize those crossings. But that's generally a general description, and if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Sylvia.
Again, apologies if this was mentioned last time, I don't recall if it was mentioned or not, but I know the course will be open past dusk, what are the plans for the lighting for people playing after that point?
No lighting. It's, we were proposing the park hours, like all park hours in Nashua, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. If we find that players are out there, you know, it's, it's dark now, right? And they shouldn't, you know, they shouldn't be out there, you know, we could adjust those hours with, with the season. You can play until, say, 9 o'clock at night in the summertime and cut it back now and going into, going into the winter, but no lighting whatsoever, and, you know, normal park hours, you know, subject to, you know, adjusting as necessary.
Thank you.
Mr. Neil?
Counselor, just a couple more questions. Looking through the project narrative, there was, there was a statement about potential other locations, one talked about Uticque Farm, too small, and Greeley Park was too flat for disc golf. I guess I don't know enough about disc golf, is, do we always look for hills, is, is that a disqualifier being too flat, I guess?
No, it's not disqualifying, I've, you know, I've actually been to a disc golf course in Pennsylvania with my, my sister-in-law and her family live, and it was pretty flat and wide open, so it's not a disqualifier. But we, the team looked at Uticque, the team looked at Greeley, and Uticque was too small an area, the Greeley includes the, kind of near the boat ramp area, right, as you head down toward the, toward the Merrimack. And the consensus of the group was, it's kind of too flat a sight, it wouldn't, it wouldn't draw in the disc players as much, and then the Robey Park wasn't available, they thought it was just a better, it was a better option. And then, on a practical point of view, you know, to try and permit something at Greeley Park would be as challenging as, perhaps more challenging than this one.
You, you had mentioned, you've visited a few courses. Are any of them nine-hole courses, or are they all 18-hole courses?
There was one I visited in Massachusetts, I forget the town, began with an M, it was a nine-hole course, and again, it was surrounded by wetlands, so there are nine-hole courses out there, but again, the proposal's an 18-hole course, it's what players want to play on, it gets, it gets professional disc golf course ratings, it draws people to it, it's just a better product, product overall, which is why we're seeking the 18 holes.
And, and I think my last question, in the, in the affidavit, question number seven, that the proposed activity you shall not significantly impair wetland capacity to provide important wildlife and fishery functions, including habitat, food, shelter, breeding, migratory and overwintering. The response is that disc golf's wetland and buffer impact will not significantly impact wildlife. I think quite a bit of what, of what the, we've seen in all of the, the public input to us is concerns about the wildlife. When we talk about significant, and this may be from, from Mr. GOV, what does significant mean?
Well, it's, the, the, the answer is in the eye of the beholder, right? But I, I think what the ordinance is getting out there is we're not going to be wiping out areas where animals and flora and fauna are located and growing, and we're not, we're not doing that. You know, we, we will have some impact naturally, we're going to be trimming, cutting back and hand pruning as necessary, but between the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau saying we really have, we don't see any threatened animals out there, and Mr. GOV has designed with Mr. Hudson's team, we're really minimizing any, any cutting, any clearing, just, just, just what's necessary for the course.
Any other questions from the board?
This is not maybe so much a question as maybe, and I don't even know that it would really, unless somebody on the board feels like we want to pursue this as a possible part of things, but I bring it up as, as much for perhaps advice for even ultimately the planning board part of things, but it kind of comes down to signage, and I think it's great that there's, you know, a fairly long list of, of rules, but, and I appreciate that generally the community is most likely going to be very mindful and respectful of, of basically being out in nature and impact. But I guess what I'm thinking about is, even though, you know, there's a definitely stated about the, you know, staying out of the wetlands and all that, I would suggest that some consideration be given to perhaps, and, and even with the wetland buffer markers, noting that those would be present in places, that there might be some additional signage to especially highlight maybe some of the more sensitive areas throughout the course, just so it kind of brings that more to direct attention. I mean, I would want them to still be pretty minimal and not, you know, anything significant, but just to, you know, most people, when they look at this kind of list, you're lucky if they've read a quarter of it, right? So somehow, I would like to see, like, maybe the highlighting about the, you know, the respecting the, the wetlands and that, and any incursion to be kind of a standalone message at least once or twice more, you know, kind of in the course or those more sensitive areas. So like I said, it's more kind of a consideration, and I don't really see it necessarily being, you know, so much in our purview. I mean, we try to consider everything, right, but I think it's ultimately more the planning board part of things, but I, it still ultimately kind of fits in with what we're doing, so just like for you.
I think it's a great comment, and let me tell you what, what I've seen. In Manchester, the two courses have a great big sign at, at the, right before the first hole, and then that's about it, all right? They have teeny little markers saying, "Hold this way," but that, that's about it. The two courses, my wife and I walked in Massachusetts, have a great big sign at the first hole, and then each hole, just like a regular golf course, has the yardage, and has the picture of the hole, if it doglegs or goes straight, and then it has like a reminder of outer bounds, all right? So I think that something like that would be appropriate here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, the second time.
Yep, all right.
So first up, if we could have Mr. Quigley speak to environmental matters, and then answer any questions.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Just an address for us also.
Uh, with Gove Environmental Services, uh, doing business in, uh, a continental drive in Exeter, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Um, so as I was saying, I was, uh, responsible initially for doing the wetland delineation on the property. And then, uh, subsequently working with the team, uh, to design a project that would be protective of the wetland resources on the site. Um, now I've, I've heard a lot of the, the public debate, sort of focus on, uh, disc golf and the, how, how, how the users of the park, um, you know, may potentially affect, uh, wetlands in a negative way. And, and that's not, uh, unimportant. Um, and there's been various proposals to address that. Um, but it, a lot less attention is being given to, uh, the design of the, of the project. And this is sort of fundamental in what I do as a wetland scientist in permitting, uh, projects around the state. Uh, it really focuses on, on the avoidance minimization, um, the design of the project, whether it's structural or layout, um, various ways. So I'd like to sort of address that, um, and I'll, and I'll try to be brief. Uh, that process really, uh, culminated in our last submission in November of last year, in which we had added several more bridges and some other trail improvements, uh, really to address existing deficiencies in the trail system. Um, as well as, uh, some restoration of the more sensitive buffer areas that had been disturbed. Um, but it had really begun a lot before that, um, in, in the overall design. Um, so, so that is, the important aspects of those are that eight of the, uh, 18 proposed fairways are located entirely outside of the buffer altogether, um, as are most of, actually 35 of the 36 baskets and tees on either side of the fairways. They're completely outside of wetlands and buffers. Uh, where fairways, uh, or trails do cross wetlands, they do so at the narrowest points in discreet locations. Um, and with trail crossings, they've been, uh, really limited as much as possible to use the existing trail network in the park. Um, importantly, all the trail crossings, uh, of wetlands are posed with these bridges that completely span the wetland. And, uh, you know, this is really the preferred, uh, method when it comes to trail building, um, in the state. And this is reflected in the, in the various permit requirements, um, from New Hampshire and a lot of the literature from, uh, you know, tri- trail building best management practices. Uh, the, you know, there's, there's, we've touched a little bit on the design and the questions. Uh, there's no impervious surface proposed other than maybe if you want to consider the concrete where some of the signs are, are being embedded in. There's no grading changes. And, uh, we have included the restoration, as I mentioned. And, and importantly, uh, a number of, uh, commitments have been discussed relative to, to rules and use, uh, to address those potential issues. So really with, with the design of the project as it is, uh, and the implementation of those important, uh, rules, just as, as for any park, um, you know, I, I, I don't see, in my professional opinion, uh, a significant or even any impact to the wellens on the property. And what the-
One minute.
-the work proposed here is really consistent with what would be, uh, necessary to establish or maintain, maintain trails and walking trails in, in any park, uh, in the city. Um, thank you, and I'm, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Newell.
So there was, um, some, uh, from the transcript of the Conservation Committee, there was a lot of concern about erosion into the wetlands, especially from that, there's a, there's a high-hilled area to the, I guess, to the west side, kind of when you first enter the trail section from the higher end, right from the parking lot. Um, in your professional opinion, is that a concern that there will be erosion in, because of this course into the wetlands that would negatively affect that?
Yeah, I, I would say that's largely, uh, addressed by the fact that these trails, number one, most of them already do exist. And where they, where they don't exist, um, you know, they, they will be pretty much natural surfaces that will be vegetated to some extent. Um, I don't see any locations, uh, you know, in the proposed plan that, that give me particular concern about erosion.
Other questions? Um, can you speak a little bit more to essentially those improvements that are occurring with the bridges? And I'm trying to get some sense of like the overall relative improvement, either, you know, the number of, of wetland crossings that are being replaced by bridges now, or even just some like overall assessment, like how significantly are we, would we ultimately be improving the, just the existing trail network by, uh, some of these, you know, again, kind of logs or, or just direct crossings through, through the wetland? So can you speak to that in a little bit of detail?
Yeah, so, uh, nine, nine bridges in total are proposed. Uh, three of those are, uh, it were exist, are existing crossings that were identified, uh, during the site walk with the Conservation Commission, um, as, ad, essentially ad hoc crossings right now. And those would just be some, uh, stones or some boards that, that, logs that had been laid down. Um, you, that's, that's not good for, uh, the wetland, uh, nor is it good for, for public safety, um, which, which might not be as, as big of a concern, uh, in this context. But, uh, nevertheless, those will be upgraded. Um, so those will be improvements. Um, a lot of, a lot of the other, you know, really, uh, most of the, the way players will get around the course, uh, utilize the existing trail system. So with those improvements, um, I think that's, that, that's generally a good, a good result, in my view. Particularly the, the first, uh, sort of the entrance trail from the parking lot. Uh, you know, my, my experience, uh, at this site has been that that was a, a wet area that was, uh, continually sort of churned up and, um, had some ad hoc bridges in it. There's now going to be a sort of a, more than a bridge, almost really like a boardwalk through that area to address that issue.
And, and a follow-up on all that is, do you know if there will be any of those, um, essentially existing wetland crossings that, uh, will still be in existence that haven't been incorporated into the disc golf course? In other words, are, are there any trails that'll still remain, um, that will have those, those kind of, you know, not, non-preferred or, you know, intrusive wetland crossings? And if so, is there any possibility of addressing those either in the course layout or as part of an overall, uh, part of this improvement package?
I'm not intimately familiar with every corner of the park, but, uh, as I recall, we walked the entire network during that site visit last summer. And everywhere we came across, uh, an existing crossing that could be improved, you know, we added that. So I, I, I think the answer is, I, I don't believe there are any outstanding crossings that could be addressed. Uh, but that, of course, could be done, again, as a part of normal maintenance that really would occur, should occur in any part.
Okay. And I might just put this out there for, um, for the overall application that it, it might be a, a good thing to look at. And it certainly would seem to be something that I would hope could be supported as part of, um, you know, an overall, again, improvement to the, uh, usage of the park. So, all right. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy.
And if I may, as a direct follow-up to that, I, I also had a similar question. There was one area that, um, I were crossed, uh, where the trail crossed over a culvert. And I wondered the same, whether that culvert was going to be replaced or not. I couldn't tell from the plan.
There's no work of that type in this applica, in this project. Um, you know, that, I, I don't know the, uh, the origin of that, but I, I know the area you're talking about. And that's, players for, using this course are going to walk over that trail, over that culvert, just as they do today.
Thank you.
I think it looks like the board's all signed with questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Attorney problem? Was there anybody else that, that was going to speak on behalf of the application directly or I'll just open it up the audience in general?
I think we're ready for the audience.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application for the Roby Park Disc Golf?
Quentin Woodruff, Chair.
Yeah.
A question for the staff via the chair. Um, would it, would it be appropriate to ask people either opposed or in favor of this to stick to, uh, the special exception criteria and the wetlands, uh, criteria?
Yes, that would be very appropriate.
Thank you.
This is a special exception to work in a wetland buffer. Other issues such as parking, lighting, really aren't appropriate for this board. We're more planning board issues. So they should stick to just the wetland issues.
And, uh, again, just, just to confirm, uh, those are, um, uh, Nashville Revised Ordinance 190, uh, dash 134 and 190 dash 115B.
That's correct. 134 is the, the actual special exception points of law. And 190, 112 through 115 are the, uh, wetlands ordinance.
Thank you.
And I'll also ask those of you that are testifying regardless of whether it's ultimately in favor or in opposition or concerns or any of that, that, um, it's, if you really, if, uh, if the points you want to make have already been made, uh, feel free to just say, I agree with, you know, the, the previous speaker or speakers, and that I'm either in support or I'm in opposition. Uh, or you can just, you know, kind of give us just like the quick summary. So, but, um, come on up and we'll, we'll kind of start the process. So then again, a reminder, name and address for the record.
Right. Uh, my name is Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, here in Nashua. Um, the benefit to all the residents far outweighs the little to no impact, which was in the official report, uh, provided after the Conservation Commission had requested that from Brandon Quigley, who has been a senior wetlands scientist for 25 years. I mean, this gentleman has done studies all over the states. And when you say little to no impact from a guy who has done this, a scientist who has done this all his life, and his answers were very clear and reflected, as a matter of fact, during one of the Conservation Commission meetings, and they were saying, you know, we'd like, um, you know, native species to be planted around the crossings. And we're discuss, discussing blueberry bushes. And he said, you know, we could do the, the six-foot. And they said, oh, no, we'd like the four-foot. I mean, every, everything that they were asking for was 100% agreed to and willingly. And again, with like the things like hand cutting. Um, I know somebody had asked about, um, the disc going into the buffer. And they have the grabbers. And if, say, my team, I'm a new player, um, my team didn't have a grabber. The next team coming down, if they saw it, they'd be like, oh, I'll, you know, I can reach that. Maybe they're taller than me, or they just have a grabber too. And then that disc, um, which is, you know, 15, 20 plus dollars, goes into a lost and found box. So it's not like, you know, people invest a lot of money in collecting and having a lot of discs that they carry with them. So they're not going to just leave this disc there that costs them 20 bucks. People put their name and address or their name and phone number on them so that if you even find one, you can call the person back. Um, the gentleman who designed the course, Avery Jenkins, is a world-class designer who has dealt with wetlands buffers in countless courses. He is on the, on the plateau of Jack Nicklaus. If he had designed a golf course here. Um, but again, the little to no impact and, um, the other positives in regard to the wetlands and the environment in general, this group of people loves, um, the environment. I know because I was, the first time that I played, you review the, all the, all the rules. Um, you can't move a rock. You can't move a stick, a branch. Uh, I've thrown from behind a tree and hopefully, you know, my disc is going in the way that I want it to go. There's no trash because there's no score, scorecards of paper. Everything's kept track on your phone and everybody keeps track. So it keeps everybody honest. Um, there's no uniforms or anything like that. It's free and it's great for kids. So I'm thrilled that I'm going to be able to use Roby Park. I'm a native. I live within a few miles. I've never used it for sledding or anything else, or maybe brought my nephews to sled when they were kids. But I'm thrilled because this city-owned park that will be maintained by the city is now going to allow me to enjoy an area that I've always just driven past and not ever been able to utilize. And I am a conservationalist myself, and, um, I'd volunteer to go in there. But I'll tell you, people respect the, the environment. And I could tell you 20 other things, but I just hope that you, once again, do the right thing and vote for this because every dot, every I has been dotted, every T has been crossed. And DPW will maintain this in stellar fashion, as will all the disc golf players. Thank you so much. One minute.
Question.
Wait, Ms. Bill. There's a question.
Yeah. I'm sorry. What was your name and address again?
Karen Bill, B-I-L-L, 95 Parnell, P-A-R-N-E-L-L Place in Nashua.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Matt LeBlanc, 49 Lantern Street. Uh, good evening. I'm here in support of disc golf. Uh, this is going to be yet another hobby or recreational activity, uh, that people of all ages can play, from young to old. It's easy, easy to walk, easy to play. Um, we have a small family of four. Uh, we're looking forward to this course and adding this into the list of activities that we already do, such as pickleball, walking in Mine Falls Park almost nightly, uh, sledding, sledding and skating already in Roby Park, um, using our public swimming pools. And, uh, looking forward to using this course, uh, as a lot of other activities that Nashville re-offers us. Uh, this is part of the reason that we actually stayed in Nashville. And Nashville's a place I was born and raised. Very proud to be a part of this community. And, uh, we're looking forward to making a lot of memories here in this course. So, um, hopefully we get, uh, the vote and we can move forward with this because we, uh, you know, again, small family of four. It's a fairly inexp, inexpensive, uh, activity for us to play. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, Mr. Sillie.
Uh, do you have any opinions on the wetlands or other things in the special exception criteria?
Um, other than, you know, I think we've been, coming here for a couple of years now. And it seems like their due diligence has been done on the city's behalf and everybody that has come out in support of this. And, uh, after all the time that's gone by, I feel like, uh, with all the bridges that crosses over, everything's been carefully looked at. So I don't think there's much impact at all to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Lauren Byers, 848 West Hollis Street Administrator, Recreation Administrator for the City of Nashua Public Works, and I'm also a resident. I'll speak behalf mostly on my, um, work-life. So I schedule all the city fields and parks in the, in this city. And, um, let me tell you, they're at a premium. We are out of space. We have a lot of people that want to get outside, and I just can't accommodate everybody. So anytime we have an opportunity to take outdoor space and offer it up to our residents as something that they can utilize, I am all for it. I see this not only being something that the general residents can use, but I'm thinking I can add camps there, disc golf camps. We fill our camps every summer. A lot of kids can't leave the city to go elsewhere for vacation or more expensive options. So they rely on what we offer them. And this is just another tool in our arsenal. It's something else for these kids and these families to do that is very inexpensive and very easy to get to. So I am, from a recreation perspective, this is gold. Um, I'm also a big advocate to wisely use our land. I feel our park superintendent is with me on that. We're very cautious about overscheduling, maintaining, keeping natural beauty natural. Uh, Mine Falls Park, don't want to develop in any capacity. Um, and we look at this the same way. We want to make the best use of it without any- We wanna make the best use of it without any detriment to the land, and I have sat through enough meetings over the last three years, looked at enough schematics, talked about, um, wetlands and preserving them, I've walked that course multiple times, and we have done our due diligence. We know what we're doing, we're going to be very cautious, we've worked with the Conservation Commission, we've worked with specialists in the field that we are not, but we have learned a lot in doing all of that, and we would be able to maintain this. I work with our Streets Department, our wastewater, our solid waste, our engineering, and we all work as a team, so if recreation and parks gets to utilize another piece of land, we will all work together to maintain it. As a resident, I think this is great. I mean, I lived here thirty years, didn't even know that woods was part of the park, and I live in southwest Nashua, so that was a little, I always thought it was kinda funny, and anytime you're gonna take, um, as a taxpayer, anytime you're going to make the best use of something in the city, I am all for. And ha- having been on the inside and seeing the due diligence and the caution and wanting to preserve what's there, I, I, it just solidifies my feeling as a resident that this is the right way to go, so thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Patrick.
A question, there were a couple of comments, um, that, uh, people would be drinking while playing disc golf, but I assume it's illegal to drink in a public park?
That is correct, and something that we enforce.
Thank you.
And don't encourage.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quentin Woodruff, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Uh, just going back to what I said, uh, question for staff through you, the Chair, uh, is it within our purview to, uh, take anything into account that isn't in regard to the special exception criteria or the wetland criteria? Like, for example, recreation, I mean, that's not within our, uh, purview, correct?
Well, I mean, we're, well, we're really, I mean, the trouble is, in some sense, you still have to kinda get, look at things at the context of what's being proposed, right? So, there's always kinda like some of the ancillary effects, though, I mean, the primary questions are about the actual impact of wetland buffers, how it's being dealt, whether it's avoidable or not, mitigation, all those kinda things, but at the same time, none of these applications come to us in a complete vacuum, right? There's still some aspect of this, so it's a, we get into the gray areas as far as the, you know, the other parts of things, so that's where it can be a little difficult for, uh, the people that are wanting to give testimony because how do you, you know, how do you fully say where does things stop as far as the relevance? And also, we need to be, you know, pretty narrow with what we're looking at, but we still wanna understand, like, well, this isn't being done just to create something that nobody's gonna use, right? So, we have to understand some context of it, so, does that help get to what you're wanting, or, I mean, certainly if Mr. Falk wants to weigh in further, but...
Well, you know, the request is actually fairly specific, it's to work in a wetland buffer for some items that are related to the disc golf activity. Part of that activity is walking around, retrieving discs that go off-course a little bit, the camaraderie of the, of the disc golf players throughout the course. It is recreation, that, that's what this is for, so people will be, you know, wandering around, doing things, so, like Mr. Shaw said, you have to just look at the whole, the whole request as one, one issue where, um, they're working in a wetland buffer, they're playing, they're having fun with their families, so it's, it's kinda related, I would say.
Just wanna make sure we don't go beyond our scope.
I mean, I think that's within this, I mean, what Ms. Byers talked about, I think that's well within the scope of, uh, this request.
Thank you.
Sorry, welcome, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Richard Smart, one fifty-nine Surles Road in Nashua, also the President of Gate City Disc Golf. Um, one of the major reasons we're here tonight is because we started this project, uh, about six or seven years ago now. Um, I won't get into all of those details, I think we've covered that at length, but what I did wanna talk about tonight is specifically what we're here for, we're here to vote on a special exception. Uh, we're, we're asking for something very specific, we should stick to that subject. Um, we have opposition here tonight, some of that opposition includes Conservation Commission members that voted against moving this project forward. I'd like to focus on that, I'd like to focus on how we got here and why things have become so disjointed. I think, uh, for me, it comes right down to how the city operates. Uh, what we need to do here, and I have a lot of experience with this 'cause I do it on a daily basis, it's called deference, we defer to experts, right? None of these board members need to be experts in landlaw, right? You don't need to be an expert in code, you don't need to be an expert in a lot of these things, why? Because you have experts that come before you, those experts then testify, okay? I have experts testify in front of me all the time. What we're asking you to do tonight is to listen to the testimony that has been presented to you and vote in favor or against the special exception, nothing more, nothing less. As I said, we have been at this for a very, very long time. I am here willing to answer any kind of question, I have tried to work with the opposition from day one, uh, they've never really wanted to have a conversation, there was no give and take, it was just no. Um, so for me, I'd be glad to go along with, with Mr. Sylvia's line here, and let's stay focused on what we're here for, this is about the special exception. We're not here to, uh, argue about whether or not disc golf has merit, we're not here to argue whether or not Robie Park should be used for this purpose. The City of Nashua owns the land, look at the address, it says two twenty-nine Main Street, the last time I checked, that's this building. That means if Nashua owns the property, we as citizens own the property. If the City of Nashua wants to put a disc golf course in their park, they should be able to do so within the letter of the law, they have dotted every tie, uh, every I and crossed every T. Thank you for your time.
Hang on, that's, I, I, that, sir, it's... Ms. Miller.
Um, thank you for your, your impassioned testimony. I assume you've played a bunch of courses?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there anything about this course that you feel is not this similar to other courses you've played? I mean, are we talking like these wetlands down the middle, you just never see this type of stuff, and you know, we got this big hill on this one side, is this, is this out of the norm or is this normally what you see on a course?
This is, this is relatively normal, um, so I'm, I'm very fortunate, uh, I was able to take a six-week trip with my wife this summer and we traveled from New Hampshire to Montana and back. Along the way, I was, uh, fortunate to play sixteen courses in twelve different states. I can't tell you of a course that didn't have wetlands that run through it. I can't tell you of a course that didn't have a pond, a body of water, something associated with it. Um, what we're doing here is not a reinvention of the wheel, it is not something that has not been done in other places. Um, I'll give you a great example of that, uh, Mammoth Lakes, California, it is in a United States federally protected national forest. Avery Jenkins designed a disc golf course, and it's a wonderful course, it's absolutely beautiful. Um, so if we can build a disc golf course in a natural, a national forest without an impact on the environment and a continued impact, right? I'm a scientist, I understand, impact is not only the construction of the course, we're all gonna be in there playing, we're gonna be in there walking, but I know you, Mr. Neal, you're back there all the time, you walk there all the time, right? So it's like that now, so if you're walking there, disc golfers are no different, I would love to see you out there, 'cause I'll get you playing. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Uh, Alexander McLean, forty-seven William Street, with Amber Lee McLean as well. Um, I'm not gonna go into much further than, you know, uh, it's a great thing for my family, it's great for the community, and, um, as an individual that worked with the, um, designer, that, you know, he took into great consideration the wetlands, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Brian Chamberlain, eight LTLA in Nashua. Uh, I just, I agree with everything that's been said about, uh, passing the wetland exception thing, especially the, from the expert, Brandon Quigley, and everything Dr. Dickie Smart just said. Uh, and to answer your question about the grabber sticks being out there, I'll willingly donate eighteen grabber sticks to the, to the holes that are necessary, that they, what'd you say, there was ten that crossed the buffer, so ten quick sticks. I'll find, we can bolt them to the trees, that's probably not the way to go about it, so rarely putting them out there without them in somebody's bag.
I guess you can make that a special condition.
Maybe some, uh, GPS trackers on them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application for the Disc Golf, uh, special exception, uh, wetland buffer work? Welcome.
Stephen Abideli, Sixth Pell Avenue. Um, just two points in addition to agreeing with the aforementioned points made. One, uh, the wetland buffers and wetlands are being addressed properly by the design plan straight out of the gate. That indicates to me that there is attention being made to maintaining the integrity of these wetlands and the buffers around them as best as possible in accordance with use of trails. Um, secondly, and this is a point that, um, I think has been brought up in previous meetings, but developing a park in this way for recreational use in addition to the typical trail use is going to add more incentive to protect the park in the future. Um, we wouldn't, by having nature of a park having a course as well, there's going to be invested interest in keeping that the way it is and preventing potential development of other sorts, whether residential or otherwise. Uh, those are the two points that I would like to make, big proponent of the course, I would love to see it come in, thank you.
Thank you. Just one more, check anybody else to speak in favor of this application? If not, I'll move to start to invite those of you that have questions, concerns, or opposition, and, uh, just a kinda the reminder, you can start to come on up, um, that, you know, we wanna try to keep this focused, again, on the special exception, uh, criteria and the actual work in the wetland buffer, uh, so, but please, uh, name and address for the record and tell us what's on your mind.
My name's Sharon Lockwood, I live at three ninety-eight East Dunstable Road in Nashua. Um, there were a lot of questions that I have, and I, most of them have been addressed, but, um, I still continue to be concerned about the, um, wetlands and, and the animals that I see every day when I walk up and down that road. Um, I'm concerned about potential danger of disc golf, or the discs hurting somebody. I'd be, I'm still concerned about the parking situation, um, in the summer when they're playing baseball, the cars are all up and down East Dunstable Road, it makes it very difficult for people to safely pull out into traffic.
I'm gonna just stop you there, you know, use it as a reminder for others, we're not speaking to parking tonight, and it was addressed, and it's, that's the planning board type of scope, so...
Okay.
Um, I just, I want people to understand, even if this board passes this, there's still at least the planning board and possibly, um, Board of Public Works yet that this application has to go forward, and, and especially the planning board deals with site plan types of things like...
Yeah.
Infrastructure, parking, uh, that kinda thing, so, uh, I, sorry to interrupt you, but I just, I wanna kinda get that out there, uh, because it's not something that, that's, we'll be considering tonight, so...
Um, I am concerned about, um, the potential for increased trash, in tri- increased traffic. Again, I walk up and down that road every day, it's, it's just littered with beer cans and fast food containers. And in the, in the winter at this, at the sledding hill, it's, it's the same thing, it's just piles of litter at the top of the hill. Um, I'm concerned about the cost, I, and it, I might be wrong, but it's my understanding that the Rotary gave thirty thousand dollars towards this and that it's already been spent, so I'm assuming that the cost of, of making the course available and maintaining it through the years is going to go onto the taxpayers.
I'm gonna stop you there too, I'm sorry, but we're not considering the cost of this kinda thing.
Okay.
It's up to the city to how they manage it, how they fund it, how they, um, you know, to maintain it and all that, so, uh, I appreciate you have concern, I feel like, again, and even some of those are not even necessarily gonna be planning issues, I mean, that's, that, that's something you would pick up with the Parks Department perhaps, or the Mayor's Office, but, um, so, you might have a lot of concerns, but I really ask you that if you don't have anything else to say specific to actually the wetland buffer and the usage and the impact, that, that maybe you don't have any other testimony relevant tonight, so...
Um, may I just make one more point, that actually, this is something that was discovered by, um, a neighbor who couldn't be here, she's ill, and she asked if I would just share this information. Um, she came here to City Hall and went through, um, a lot of the, um, letters that were sent in favor, and what she found is about two-thirds of the total of ninety-four, um, letters that she went through were not from Nashua citizens. And, and many of them were from out of state, as far away as California. The advocates were city employees, Rotary, Professional, uh, Disc Golf Association, and the Breaking Chains, um, stores, so...
I mean, I could tell you, when, when we get those letters, we all see where they're coming from.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we, we understood when we were getting those originally, um, yes, that, that many of those were, uh, not necessarily from, from Nashua residents, so...
Thank you.
But that, that is part of, uh, thank you. Welcome.
Um, I sent you a letter yesterday about my concerns with the drawings, and I'm just gonna go over that a little bit.
I'm sorry, give, give your name and your address.
Sorry, my name's Joanna Irma, um, I live at Sky Meadow in Nashua, uh, and I'm one of the Robie Park butters.
Um, actually, can you give your specific address?
Oh, yeah, ten Mountain Laurel's Drive.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm opposed to this project. I'm, wanna give a little bit of my background so you can see where I'm coming from in the rest of what I say, so I am a California licensed or registered architect with a Masters of Architecture degree from MIT, during which time I studied landscape architecture at Harvard. I have over two and a half decades of experience working on architecture projects in seven states and six different countries, many of them large, urban-scale, involving complex landscape design. I played a prominent role on the design of the North End Parks on top of the Big Dig in Boston, and I've also taught architecture design at four different colleges and universities located in three different states. Based on my professional experience, I wanna say that I am shocked at how incomplete the drawings, uh, of the proposal have been submitted. First-year students would fail submitting drawings like this. They are too incomplete to understand the design intent, they're too incomplete to be able to make a decision on what is happening in the wetland area, and they're too incomplete to be able to tell just how much damage the wetland would sustain. Information typically found on site plans and mandatory, from my experience, for a conservation review is excluding, is excluded from the drawings, there's no topography, the basis of any site plan shown. This is even more important here because this is a very steep site, and if you remove vegetation which holds the soil in place with its roots, you're gonna have runoff and erosion which you already see happening, and that water's gonna trickle down and it's gonna, at the end of the day, there's gonna be a lot of sediment in the wetland. It's proper, it's gonna come down the hills because it's a very steep site. Um, there are no trees shown, no brushers shown, there's only a number of, number of trees shown, for how many trees will be cut down, but we don't know where they are, what size they are, what species they are. How can we know for certain that the number of trees listed and the amount of brush to be removed is correct when we don't even have a survey to go off of? There's no survey of the site. Um, no paths relating to how the game will play it are shown, we have no idea how the players will get from one basket to another, what plants they're gonna trample on along the way, and what trees they will damage. Um, how am I on time?
You have two and a half minutes.
Um, the bridges are, shown are just generic USDA forestry bridges, how do we know that the banks of the stream are not going to cave in from their weight? We don't. Um, what are the bridges for? They will unnecessarily shade the wetland. Unless it's being fenced in and fences are not shown, the players can walk anywhere, and because the discs are primarily thrown across the wetland, they will. Where are the trashcans and bathrooms? They're not shown on the drawings. This is a game that takes hours to play with players that drink water or whatever, they're gonna be drinking. How can we know that they're not going to throw their trash into the stream? Word of honor is not a legally binding document, drawings are. These things are not in the drawings. Finally, the park plans to be open until ten PM at night and there's no lighting plan. Lighting would not only impact wildlife, but it requires foundations and wiring to run either underground or through the trees, which in a forest is a fire danger, and because the game is played so close to the wetlands, one can assume that the lighting would be. the game is played so close to the wetlands, one can assume that the lighting would be in the wetland area. The environmentalist who has a conflict of interest, because he's being paid by the city, may have green-lighted the project in his report, but from my experience, that's not how design works. Nobody builds off of reports, you build off of drawings. The information needs to be in the drawings for everyone, you, consultants, and the public to understand what's going on. Typical submission to conservation review include a survey of the site, which here does not exist, site plans with the information I described, prepared by civil engineers and landscape architects, and renderings. And the team that worked on this design is not, they're not professionals. They add the name professional, is it time?
No, one minute.
They add the word professional to their title, because they play disc golf professionally, but that just means they're earning money playing disc golf. They're not licensed, they don't have experience, trained experience, working as landscape architects or civil engineers, so, I mean, it's worrisome from my perspective. And I don't think, with the set being as incomplete as it is, something I have never in my life seen. I was honestly shocked. Anyone can make a decision about what's actually happening there.
The board has any questions for you? All right, thank you.
Carol Sarno, 15 Rocky Hill Drive, Nashua. I am a member of the Conservation Commission and would like to share some of my reasons for giving this proposal an unfavorable recommendation. As you know, the commission reviews projects to ensure that they comply with city ordinances regarding wetlands and buffers. We know that buffers help to protect the quality and function of wetland. The trees, shrubs, ground cover, and leaf litter in the buffer help filter contaminants and slow stormwater runoff. When buffers are disturbed, runoff increases, and contaminants are more likely to be introduced to the wetland. Wetland Complex A is the stream that flows through the middle of the property and has the primary functions and values of water quality, wildlife habitat, and aesthetics per the GOV October 2022 report. That report describes the area as having the character of a narrow valley with steep slopes leading to the southerly flowing stream. These steep slopes are particularly concerning, because they lead to the wetland. Having trails or disc golf fairways crisscross a wetland and buffer is, is never a good idea. A trail or a fairway use will, will lead to soil compaction and erosion, and when combined with the steep slopes, will negatively impact the water quality. Complex A has five fairways that cross the stream within a 600-foot span. Some of these fairways go up and down particularly steep terrain. Fairway three, for instance, the basket is right outside the buffer on top of a very steep bank. There is no existing path that goes there. This will be a new path that goes to that basket. There are a total of 10 fairways that cross or run parallel to wetlands or buffers in the entire project. The wetland buffer, 40 feet on each side of the wetland, will be marked as out of bounds. This is good, but my concern is that players will enter the buffer to retrieve discs. Even if they have the retriever, it may not be long enough, or they may not have a retriever, or if one is left there, they may still choose not to use it. Incursion into the buffer is especially likely to happen in dry years like this one, because it's, it would be very difficult to understand why the out of bounds is even there. If you walk there today, you'll find that most of what is considered out of bounds is actually very dry, so it doesn't look like a wetland. It wouldn't seem like a place that you shouldn't go. At the last meeting, Mr. Jenkins mentioned, your last meeting, Mr. Jenkins mentioned a couple of courses, and one was designed by him in Milford, Mass., and he described it as very, very popular. That course has nine holes arranged on both sides of a stream. None of the fairways cross the stream. The fairways are arranged so that only two stream crossings are required. If you're interested, I have printouts of that design, and he said that was a very popular course and could be played as either nine or 18 holes. Mr. Jenkins also mentioned Manchester Hollows and indicated that that was an equivalent course to that plan for Roby. The ConCon visited the Hollows course in August of '23 as our sidewalk. The Minutes noted that it was clear from footprints and other observations that out-of-bound violations occur. We saw bare soil and erosion around the wetland areas. It's clear that the Roby plan was developed and implementation begun in 2021 without regard to wetland or wetland buffers. 2,200 feet of wetland was impacted in this project per the ConCon application, yet the ZBA application shows no wetland application incursion, and I wonder why. I'll finish by saying that the city's application states that the benefits of having another city-sponsored activity outweigh the wetland buffer impact, the wetland and buffer impact proposed. I respectfully disagree with that and believe that the Roby site is unsuitable for the 18-hole disc golf course that's proposed.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Mr. Sylvia?
Is there any way that the holes could be readjusted to be more comparable to the course that you mentioned, so there's less impact?
Would you like to see this?
Yeah.
It's a nine-hole course.
So I guess is there any way that?
I, I can't really answer that question. I'm not a disc golf designer. Personally, I think it would be very difficult to fit an 18-hole professional disc golf course in Roby Park without impacting wetlands. I do believe it would be reasonable to fit a nine-hole course, perhaps similar to what's shown there on this property. It, it seems that this was the, the third location that the city considered for disc golf. There was no sidewalk done by the Board of Public Works at their 2021 meeting, so they, they didn't get to observe the property, although they did, on one of the slides in the BPW presentation, there was clearly an indication that there was a stream, a wetland that ran down the property. So, the city should have known that there was a wetland, yet they chose to begin development in 2021, and someone asked earlier, what did that look like? That would look like basically cutting trees and ripping shrubs up by the roots, so, and there was a lot of, if you walked there at the time, you'd see a lot of bare ground. It was very clear that the city had no respect for the wetlands.
Thank you. Ms. Neely?
Commissioner Sarno, first of all, thanks for your work on the Conservation Commission. We always appreciate all the information that we get from your group coming to us. We, we do lean on that heavily when we see it. We have had the chance to, or I have had the chance to read the minutes from, from the meeting where you guys not just first discussed it, where you finally made your, your final votes. So that was really the reason why I asked Mr. Quigley about his concerns about any erosion coming off of that hill on the west side into, into Section A, but it sounds like you are not in agreement with what his testimony was. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is correct. Yeah, I am concerned about that side, the west side, but also the east side. Particularly, the worst hole is Hole Three, where the basket is basically on, it's outside of the buffer, but it's on top of a pretty steep hill, so you've got to, I'm not sure how you get up this hill, but you've got to get up there to retrieve your, your disc. There's no path there now, it's.
If Hole Three went away, would you, would you, would that change your mind? Because, because I, I don't disagree with your assessment of Hole Three, I think that's problematic.
Yep. So, Hole Three is, is one of the issues I have. I guess I have an issue with the whole section where there are five holes that crisscross the wetland. Hole Three is one of those. I, I'm not a disc golfer, but if I throw my disc and it goes over and it clears the wetlands, that's great, I just go on the, on the bridge and cross along, but if I throw my disc and it lands in the buffer and it's dry, I know the good people here tonight respect the out-of-bounds markers, but I might not. I might go and retrieve my disc, because it's $15, and continue to throw it, and then, now I'm in a position where it's easier for me to just walk across the stream, because honestly, today that stream is not flowing, there's really no water in it. So I'd just walk across it rather than even use the bridge. So this is my concern about the threat to the wetlands. I respect Mr. Quigley's opinion, but I do disagree with him.
Thank you. Grau, sit, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jed Crook, 31 Newberg Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. The other opposing vote for the Conservation Commission. And it was not an easy vote to make. I really respect the community that's in this room and has showed up throughout the years now to advocate for this, for this plan of recreation in Roby Park. I became aware of this project in 2021, when I, I'm a big user of those trails and went to use them and saw that they had started doing some clearing. I talked to the director, Fodo, at the time, and let them know that they were going to be violating wetland buffers, but that was not heard, and I continued to bring it up to people at the Conservation Commission meetings afterwards, and construction continued until DES became involved. In 2023, the Nashua Regional Planning Commission did a natural resource inventory of Nashua and identified this area specifically as critical wildlife habitat and a secondary corridor, as well as unfragmented land that goes into Massachusetts. So, with that being, you know, evaluated by a third party, I think, I think that is very important. Not only that, but I've shown this plan to disc golf players who are not in this room, who, who have described the amount of crossings and sort of like the zigzag throwings of the course back and forth over the wetland as excessive and obnoxious. I think that there is a reasonable compromise to this plan. I said that at the Conservation Commission meeting that I voted against this on, but I don't think it is this plan that is before you tonight. And I, yeah, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Second, Mr. Neely?
Yeah, Commissioner Crook, same, same comment. Thank you for all your work you do there. When I was reading the transcripts of that meeting, I, I was completely taken aback by your statement that you have talked to disc golf players who are wetland scientists who are against Hole 17, 16, 15, 3, and 4 being too close together. You just used the word obnoxious talking about that. Really concerned, I was really, that actually stopped my reading when I got to that. Is there anything, how, how do we get your vote to be a positive? Is it going to a nine-hole course? Is it getting rid of this, I mean, getting rid of this Hole Three? Like, how, how do you get there so it's a win-win for everybody?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for, for asking that. Well, so, I mean, the easiest answer is make, make it a nine-hole course, spread the holes out more. There, there's land still available to the, which way is this, to the north along Spit Brook Road, that's behind the condominiums. There, I, I, at one point I had drawn out an alternative, but this is not, this is not that map. That uses the same trail that is listed here as Trail C, but it, it, yeah, I mean, that's, 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 when I showed it to friends who play disc golf, they were like, can't they just make it a nine-hole course where you play it a different way on the way back? Because that's what they're, that's what they're used to playing. And, yeah, this, it, it took, it took a long time to even get a map, so this is, this is what we're working with. And they, the city has been very willing to work with us on certain things in terms of like replanting and whatnot, because the, you know, the cutting had been done prior to, the clearing for these holes had been done prior to Mr. Quigley being involved, so he wasn't able to see the baseline, you know, to, to, you know, see the disturbance, but they've, they've been, you know, everyone, everyone in this room wants to see this happen, and they're willing to, you know, move some things around for that, but the Conservation Commission's mission is to protect wetlands in the, in the Nashua area, and there's eight or nine holes that are asking maybe 100 people a week to throw discs over, over them. I don't feel comfortable voting in, in approval of that. I think there can be disc golf in Roby Park, I just don't, I just don't think it's this plan, from, from a conservation commission perspective.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Hi, DeMuciole, Sixth Minhurst Road, Nashua. Government and industry have a duty to prevent harm when there is credible evidence that harm is occurring or is likely to occur, even when the exact nature and full magnitude of harm is not yet proven, proven. That's from the Center for Health and Environment and Justice. You have credible evidence. You've had two people speak from the ConCon saying there is going to be harm. This is not being, this is not just another activity. This is being groomed as a professional activity. With thousands of people a month, per Avery Jenkins, is going to come into the community, and you don't think there's going to be any wetland impact? I, I think that that's very naive. If you had gone to Hollows North, I did the sidewalk with the ConCon, first thing we saw was damage to the trees. We saw out-of-bounds ropes that weren't there on the ground. We saw people going into the out-of-bounds. The players that were with us did correct them, but you can't expect that this isn't going to happen. It's very nice that the man wants to donate the grabber things, but I can tell you, they're going to be stolen. From being, looking at some of the vandalism that happens out there, they'll be stolen, so that's not going to work. This is supposed to be a free activity, yet we need, if, if we're not going into the wetlands, we're only going into the buffers, why do we need the grabby sticks? Because you know the discs are going to land in the wetlands. Go on Facebook, you can see all of the discs picked up at Muldoon Park, they have hit the wetlands, and we're just going to pick them up when, when we have time, when somebody walks by and has time? That's not right. That's damaging the wetlands. Just because something is allowed doesn't mean it's a good idea. The asphalt plant was allowed, and we pretty much said it wasn't a good idea. I ask that you give weight to this, because in reality, this is a game. Games can be played anywhere. The wetland is there. I don't agree with everybody in this room wanting it. The wetland is there, and once it's ruined, it's not going to be able to come back. That water is so clean running through it, it's also going to affect neighboring town of Dunstable. Old Maids Brook runs into Salmon Brook, runs into the Merrimack River. That is very important. That is an important piece of information for you. Carol said a lot of this stuff. Also, I'm just curious, because according to the city's GIS, Roby Forest, I call it Roby Forest, but there's a conservation easement on 57 acres and then a conservation easement on the one acre. I'm kind of shocked at this, because why would a conservation easement be there, and why would anybody think that allowing a professional? And why would anybody think that allowing a professional sport be in compliance with the conservation easement? So that's something that I'll let you guys figure out because I, it's beyond me. You can't, you know, nine holes, that's an option. How do you, how do you not do wetland impacts? You can fix up really greens. You can make man-made obstacles. I do, you know, horses jumping. We use obstacles all the time that can be removed. It's easily done. And it's not a free, you know, we're not going to talk about cost, but it's not free because people have to buy the discs. And if you don't think trash is going to end up in the wetlands, I can tell you that it is because I've picked up piles and piles of trash. Beer cans, golf balls, all of that. And the city's own conservation brochure, it states, people visit New Hampshire to see moose and other wildlife. Wildlife viewing is good for the economy and tourism. Wetlands provide a visual landscape to enjoy observing wildlife and listen to the sounds of nature, nature. When I went to the Hollows, I first arrived to a dog trapping in the parking lot, defecating, I'll say. I saw broken glass. I saw people going out of bounds. I saw people throwing with no warning to anybody else on the course, dogs running loose on the course. So a dog doesn't, is not going to respect an out of bounds rope? Dog's not going to respect that.
You need to wrap up. You've got about fifteen seconds.
Our master pa, our master plan itself calls out that Section A encourages protection of wildlife habitats to improve land use. And even Mr. Quigley's testimony, we don't ha, you don't have to listen to his expert advice. You don't have to. There's no, there's no legislator that says you have to listen to his advice. But even he admits to the value of the wetlands. Thank you.
Hang on a second. Let me see if there's any questions for you though from the board. Okay, there aren't any, but thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Chaney. I live at two forty Westford Street in Dunstable. I'm on the Conservation Commission in Dunstable and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Land Trust, Dunstable Rural Land Trust. Between the two outfits, we own about eleven hundred acres along the state line and many of the people who use that land are from Nashua and we're glad to have them. We owned you one time, but at any rate, we're glad to have you back. We have a couple of concerns. One, of course, we're downstream from you folks and so anything that happens to the water quality from this project, we will see. So we appreciate your careful questioning and the concerns of other folks. We have eighty-five acres directly south of this proposed project and it comes within a hundred and fifty feet, I'll give or take, of Robey Park and a little sliver land in between. But anyway, the second concern we have is wildlife habitat. Now I note that apparently under the Natural Heritage Program of New Hampshire, there are no state listed species known to live in this, in Robey Park. However, in the eighty-five acres that are conservation lands in Dunstable, it's classed by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program as core habitat. Two species in particular, one, the eastern box turtle, which is classed as a species of concern, and one, the Blandings turtle, which is classed as a threatened species. And the, it's interesting that in New Hampshire, both those species are classed as endangered. Now that's because we're at the northern edge of their range, okay? But I know that New Hampshire Natural Heritage folks are very aware of these two species. I don't know if any sweep was ever done of Robey Park or whatever, but at any rate, we have these two concerns. One is the water quality, that the greatest efforts possible be taken to protect those wet ones. And the other, the turtle habitat, because I'm not aware that they stop at the state line necessarily. And so there it is. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, but glad that I have the opportunity to express our concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Judy Taylor and I live on Hawthorne Village Road in Sky Meadow. I have some petitions of people who are against the proposal. Would I give those to you?
You, I mean, you can, we can pass them around the board and then we'll keep them, keep it. Is it multiple copies or just one document?
There's several, there's several people.
I am opposed to it. I see in the park presently the disregard for rules and regulations with cars parked all over the place and the trash overflowing. And I would like to believe as a human that these disc golf players would be carry in, carry out. But I also worry about families with little children running in the, you know, sensitive areas of the wetlands and how will that be policed? Will, you know, families really hold to keeping their children on the paths and not in the sensitive areas with the skunk cabbage and all the other vegetation that's there? So that's, my biggest concern is how are we going to be sure that these people, players, are going to adhere to the strict things of not getting into the sensitive areas of our wetlands?
All right. I don't think there's any questions on the board. Thank you.
My name's Tony D. Gregorio and I reside in Hawthorne Village Road at Sky Meadow. I'm opposed to Robey Park Disc Golf Course proposal. At a time when budgetary restraint should be employed, we find the city of Nashua committing to unknown future capital and maintenance expenditures for this proposal. This is over and above committing to many more capital dollars yet to be spent.
Sir, 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 much like the first.
I'm sorry, I, I have a hearing deficiency.
I need you to basically speak to the wetland buffer and the impact, not the cost of the project or that part of things. That's not.
And the peripheral effects to it?
Related, but, but to some extent, you're, you're going beyond and into the part of things that we're not, can't really consider.
Thank you. I still voice my opposition.
Yeah, that's, you know, just go back to the mic though because otherwise you don't get picked up for our recording. Thank you.
Still want to voice my opposition to the, the project. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who had questions, concerns, or opposition? And I apologize if you kind of did it in the intro since I wasn't here for that, but when we do have opposition to a case, the procedure is the applicant has up to five minutes to come back to rebut those things that have been brought up. And then one and only one of those in opposition gets to finish off. So if, if you need some time to confer amongst those of you that spoke in opposition to determine who would be like that spokesperson, we can give you a couple of minutes now to do that. But I want to make sure you understand that.
We'll take the five minutes.
We could take a five, yeah. Why don't we, we'll take a five-minute break, recess, and that way those of you can try to confer. Thank you. Bye-bye.
You're good, man.
Yeah.[1203.88]
Can I start back up? Finish your conversations. And can we go ahead and give them a knock to let them know we're coming back on? I need you to stop talking in the audience, please. If you need to keep a conversation going, you can step out in the hallway. Thank you. Welcome back, Attorney Prohlman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, Andy Prohlman. Attorney Prohlman here on behalf of the city. A couple of points, and I'll just take them in order of the speakers in opposition. Ms. Irma mentioned that we have incomplete plans, and that's partially true. And the plans are not incomplete with respect to the wetland crossings, the wetland buffer impact, the bridges that are being proposed. Those are plan details that are finished and complete, and we're going to stick with. This is not, however, a full-blown site plan. I'm before this board regularly with ZBA presentation plans, where we present you just kind of the basic. Here's what we need. We need setback. We need wetland impact. We need a use variance or whatnot. And then, we go to the planning board with a, you know, it takes a couple of months to turn what we do here into a full, you know, 20, 30-page plan set, a site plan that goes to the planning board. So, we are complete with respect to what we're requesting tonight. It is true that we're not complete, you know, if we're going to have trashcans, where signs are going to be. All those details are flushed out with planning staff and the planning board. So, we do have complete plans for what is being asked for you tonight. Ms. Sarnoff from the Conservation Commission and the other gentleman from the Conservation Commission spoke on a couple of things. Again, the Conservation Commission was a 2-2 tie vote. Their rules present a negative recommendation, but it was a 2-2 vote at the end of the day. And a couple of points. Please don't forget that we're not talking about pristine conservation land. The trail network that's there today is creating the trash that people are complaining about. The trail networks that created today are creating wetland buffers, impacts that people are talking about. Dogs are out there today. And what we are proposing, we believe will be an improvement, because we're going to improve bridges. Mr. Shaw, you had a comment, you know, while you're out there, if there are other bridges that aren't part of the disc golf, perhaps we could take a look at those. I think that's a great idea. All right? I think that makes all the sense in the world. I do agree, looking at Hole Three, the basket for Hole Three, it's tight right in there to the wetland buffer. That's going to have to be pushed out a little bit. But again, that basket for Hole Three is not part of the wetland buffer impact. That's not part of the request, anyway. So, those are the type of things that, as we go through the planning process, we can tweak, we can adjust, we can make those changes. Manchester, New Hampshire has two 18-hole golf courses. We are seeking to install one 18-hole golf course in Nashville. Most of the, most courses that we deal with, that we look at, that Avery Jenkins designs, are 18-hole golf courses. And they're there for a reason, because those are the draws, those get the rankings, those get people that want to come to them. The nine-hole tournament, even if we had a nine-hole disc golf course here, we'd still have wetland impact, we'd still have crossings, we'd still have bridges. But that's not what's being proposed. We are looking through the 18 holes, because that's what disc golfers are looking to do. And I would remind the board that, you know, Ms. Mutioli had some comments that there shouldn't be any impact, there shouldn't be any disc golf course out here at all. But the standard is, we have city-owned land, a city proposes use, and the standard is, do we meet the criteria for the wetland special, for the wetland, for the special exception, and then the wetland affidavit? We believe that we do. And finally, Mr. Chaney, I believe his name was, from the, from Dunstable, raised some very good concerns that we believe that we are addressing with the plan that we present, with Mr. Quigley's expert testimony. We don't believe that we're going to have any impacts to species or to water quality, because we're trying to do our best to stay out of the wetlands, do the bridges, stay out of the buffers, and to address those concerns. And finally, you know, there was a comment, you know, how are we going to keep people out? You know, we're proposing all kinds of things, signs, roping, you know, we're going to do our absolute best to keep people out of the buffer, out of the wetland areas. And we believe that we have that with the plan, that, you know, as the plan goes through the process, should we move forward, it's only going to get stronger. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any from the board?
I wanted to ask, it was brought up about, you know, this going to go to the design and the number of crossings. And this, this is based on not going to nine. My question is based on still doing the 18-hole, because that's what you're asking for. But do you know what either was considered, or what could still be considered regarding kind of this concern about the zigzagging going across the wetland, and whether there is any, you know, because, you know, arguably, your application is that no other feasible means can be, you know, sought. So, that's the usual criteria, right? So, does, does, is it the opinion of the applicant that that is indeed the case? Or is there still possibly some consideration that perhaps the number of crossings still could potentially be reduced if there was less of that zigzagging of the course?
Well, don't forget, the, for the CONCOM, it went the other direction. Originally, six cross, six bridges were proposed. But then, in discussions with CONCOM, hearing their concerns, we upped that to nine crossings to stay out of wetland and buffer areas. Right? I, I don't disagree that those holes that go back and forth, those, perhaps those could be spread out, but we'd still have the same crossing. Perhaps we can find a little bit more room in between those holes, but we're still going to have the same wetland, we're still going to have the same number of bridges and the same amount of crossings, right? Those could be spread out a little bit, but, you know, it doesn't change, you know, what we're requesting tonight. And, and I think a large part of the CONCOM concern is, you know, they were really ticked off that the city went in there and started, you know, cutting and clearing without any permits or approvals. Right? That, that really got under their skin. However, you know, we're here to address that, fix that, make it right.
Thank you. I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, no, Mr. Sylvia.
You mentioned that in the past, you've given certain designs to the ZBA, and then certain designs to the planning board. In this case, would the applicant be able to come back with those planning board-level designs for us? Or is that just not feasible?
Well, we haven't provided any designs to the planning board or planning staff. It's just...
I, I mean, like, what you said earlier, like, sometimes after approval is given by the ZBA, there's additional plans given in the process for your, your past applications.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, would it be possible to get that level of detail if we, if we tabled this and came back?
Well, we, I mean, we, I can't say no to that. We certainly could. There's nothing preventing us from doing that. But it doesn't change our, it wouldn't change our request to you tonight. Because our request to you tonight is for the, the wetland crossings that won't, that won't change. What will change is issues outside your purview. Right? You know, for example, where is, where is signage going to go? If there are trashcans, how many? Where are they going to go? If there's a porta potty, where's it going to go? All outside the wetland buffer areas. Right? So, I can't say no. We could come back and have a far more detailed plan. But, but again, don't forget the whole purpose with the, with the, with this phase of the design is that we are seeking permission to do what we want to do. And if we get permission, then you go all in on the plans, and, and, and it's a lot more cost, a lot more detail that gets to the planning board.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can her and I split it, or does it have to just be one person?
Just one person.
Just one person?
Yeah.
Hey, you're stuck with me, then.
You can, you can raise the, or lower the mic down.
Denise Mucioli, Sixsmithhurst. So, I'll try to stick to the attorney's comments. You know, a nine-hole golf course could be played two rounds. That, that's something feasible. They don't want to do that. I, I take personal, for him to say that the CONCOM was ticked off, I think that's a really huge insult to the CONCOM. Because I was out in the, you know, the heat, walking, doing sight walks with them. And I know Ms. Sarnoff has spent, and Mr. Crook have spent a great deal of personal time researching this. So, I don't think that it was any type of a vendetta, that they didn't pass it. 2-2 was an unfavorable recommendation. I was told by Matt Sullivan that it had to be approved by CONCOM. How many people have come through here, and you've remanded them back to CONCOM? I ask that it be tabled and remanded back to CONCOM. You know, the issues with the trash. I know it's trash, but the trash ends up in the wetland. Trust me, because I've picked it up. I've seen painted branches end up in, you know, the paint and the lead or whatever. It's probably not lead paint, but that, you know, those, that has chemicals. At night, when they're playing, how could they see the wetlands? How would they know where the wetlands were? It's pitch black back there. So, there's no lighting. How can we protect the wetlands? It's impossible, right? What else? And, you know, they knew very well that they needed permission to remove trees. I counted 125 downed trees. I, I did include saplings, so that may not go with your count. I watched them bulldoze trees down and damaged non-target trees. Wetlands were delineated, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, but it was delineated about maybe two years ago. Things have been moved around. Kids have removed flags. This has all changed back there. Heritage Commission, which the man from Dunstable talked about, that, that review only lasts for one year. That has expired. So, you don't know if an endangered species moved in there. I personally have seen what I think is the New England cotton tail, I mean, the New England rabbit, and that's a different species than the one that's prolific. So, you don't know, we don't know what's, what's gone on back there. You know, with the trashcans, you'd have to put bear-proof trashcans in the woods. Who's going to go through all that hassle of opening a bear-proof trashcan to throw a tissue? Nobody. Nobody's going to do that. And if you leave the trashcans, it is going to affect the character of our neighborhood. It's going to do harm to us, because there's going to be rodents everywhere. Animals are going to get stuck in the bad trash. It's going to smell. This is our neighborhood, right? I mean, this is the neighborhood. This is the character of the neighborhood. Now, I got to deal with people, you know, with, with all trash. I got to go through and pick it up, because DPW is not going to be right on the ball. They're not. It's supposed to be carry-in, carry-out, says right at Roby Park, right on the, on the fence.
Can I, I'd like to ask you to move on, because, no, you can, you have some time, but it just, the trash issue is not really...
Well, the trash goes in the wetland.
You're getting into usage itself, not about the actual wetland buffer and that impact. So, it's, it's tricky, but you're, you're now talking about how people are going to use the park. And so, it's not going to factor into our decision about the actual wetland buffer impact.
I respectfully disagree, but I will, I'll leave these...
I will argue with you a little bit more, I'm sorry, then. Because this gets to, it's a park, and it's meant for usage. It's not conservation land. And so, you need to account for the fact that people are going to use the park.
Correct.
People can leave trash anywhere in the park or anywhere in the city, and we can't always enforce it. But you're, you're delving into usage, not what's been proposed as far as what's been asked for to be done. And so, if you have something else relative to the wetland buffer, please continue. Otherwise, please end your testimony.
The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services recommended mitigation be done, and it has not been done as of yet. Bushes were supposed to be planted to replace what they've taken. That's wetland buffer, right?
Well, that's, that is not before us either. That's, it sounds like it's between the state and the city.
But it's impact.
There, yeah, I'm, I'm not arguing whether there's impact, or what the mitigation should be, or whether the city's done right, but that is not part of what we are considering.
All right. I ask that it be tabled and remanded, and have you respectfully remanded back to CONCOM and see if they can come up, they can come up with a plan to make this work. But I don't think that it is going to work. Thank you.
And just before you leave, so, we, what the CONCOM decides is not binding on the ZBA. We incorporate their recommendations into our deliberations and the other parts of the information that we take in. But we do not require that the CONCOM pass something before we hear about it. It needs to go to them, but they, and they can provide their recommendation, but it's not binding on this board.
Okay.
So, I appreciate what you want to happen, but I'm not, we're not dependent on this, I mean, if that was the system, it wouldn't have gotten to us yet.
That's not, I'm just saying, that's not how it was explained to me by Matt Sullivan so many, like, years ago, when I started this, when I started my opposition. Said it had to pass CONCOM, and then move on to zoning and planning.
Yeah, I think it's, that it has to go through CONCOM, but...
Okay, all right.
Maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my...
That's what I had.
It's, it's a recommendation, I think.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, I just ask that you...
Okay, we, we understand your point.
Yeah, give them way to...
Well, that, that does close out the public meeting. We will now confer in the, I'm sorry, the public hearing. We will now confer in the public meeting. Reminder that Mr. Sylvia is our voting member on the case, but all of us can participate in the discussion. Does anybody want, I'm sorry, you're ready to go ahead. I thought you heard. Yeah, please.
Yeah. I just want to start off, I think last time I might have been a little rude to Attorney Prohlman. I just want to apologize if I was, and if, okay, good. And, and if, I want to also apologize if I was rude to anybody in terms of trying to stay within the bounds of what we need to take into account here, because it, I, I know how it is to be on the other side of things and not know what to say, so it's, it's definitely helpful for us to just focus on what we're looking at. And I understand there's a gray area. So, I just wanted to, I'm glad I was able to talk about that tonight and narrow things down a little bit. In regard to this application, my, my comments are very similar to what I had last time, although I wasn't a voting member on that. If there was more information, if there was more of a plan, I would support this 1,000 percent. I think Ms. Irma, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name incorrectly, she, she brought up some very good points in terms of, it was hard to discern certain aspects of this. And I think I heard some things from the other board members that there were some concerns. It sounds like they might have been addressed, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I'm not 1,000 percent behind this, but it's, I don't know what percent I am. Less than 100, but I would like to hear from some of my board members to get some more information on what they think.
Mr. Minkar?
So, just to follow up with Mr. Sylvia's comments, I, I agree that I struggled with the plans, and they were hard for me to read, hard for me to follow, and hard for me to walk around the land and understand what was happening. So, I think that, that's a point we'll take it. I, I think when I go through this, if I may, take a moment or two, you know, I'm looking at the criteria, and yes, I think it's listed in the table of uses, it's a recreational use. I don't think it will cause undue traffic congestion or undue repair, pedestrian safety, although it will create traffic. I guess you could argue whether it's undue. And I don't think it's going to overload public water drainage sewer, et cetera. And I don't think it's going to be out of character with the neighborhood either. There is a park there now, there are active recreational uses, there's a golf course next door. That leaves special regulations, are the special regulations fulfilled? And so, I, I, I turned to those, and I could be satisfied, I think, with most of them, but I'm struggling with a couple. The first is, the use can't be reasonably avoided, so I'm struggling with that. And related to that, I, I guess I would say, I'm struggling with the least damaging and best practical in terms of proposed, is proposed, and is it necessary for the productive use of adjoining buildable land? Some of the examples that we often see are, and I think that are referenced in the code, you have land that you need to access, and you need to put in a driveway, and that's going to have an impact. In order to productively use your property, you've got to get to it. Or you're, you know, developing an area on a site, and you have to get intruded into a buffer area in order to put in drainage controls, as, as an example. So, I'm struggling with these a little bit. I, I, I'm satisfied on criteria number five, that we do have expert testimony that, you know, there are no rare or endangered species, or at least it's highly unlikely. I can be satisfied, although I know there were concerns related to erosion and sedimentation control, that that would be addressed. I also am satisfied that we wouldn't see significant wildlife impacts, although there would be, of course, impacts. I don't think it would impair the stability of the water bodies' banks. In this case, the bridges do seem to be appropriate interventions for crossing a wetland area, and I don't think it's going to adversely impact the wetland buffer or function. So, again, I'm coming back to, I, I'm struggling with the use can't be reasonably avoided and a couple of items that I think are related to that. I, I certainly don't want to go down the road of trying to redesign what's been proposed, and I don't want to go down the road of suggesting it should be nine holes instead of 18. I don't think that's for us to do. I just kind of come back to those points, and I'd be really interested in my colleagues' views.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Mr. Neil E.
Yeah, I'll take it. So, so this is, this is very tough. I will tell you, as you all may or may not remember, I was alone voting against this last time. I am of the persuasion, anytime we work on anything with wetlands, I want to get in, get out. I've been pretty consistent about that the last couple of years. This is, this is not so much a get in, get out. But I will tell you, I did a site visit of the hollows in Manchester, and quite frankly, it was great hearing about disc golf from all these folks out here. They're very impassioned. I thought it was like a golf course, where everything was getting bulldozed, it was all going to be grass, and I had no idea until I got to the hollows exactly what I was working with, with, with the trees, quite a bit up and down. The experience I had at the hollows was, was nothing like these, these folks had said that they ran into. It was clean. I went on a holiday weekend, and it was raining. There was still 10 people out there in the rain playing, which just tells you there's a passion to what's going on. I actually came away from that very impressed. What's, what's working against that here is I read, I read the transcript of the Conservation Commission, which I don't think we had last time, or maybe I didn't have it, but I had a chance to read it. And to have two of the folks against it, saying why they're against it, and they were very impassioned. They were both here tonight, which I think says quite a bit. So, so, so I am still struggling with this. And I know we all keep kicking the can down the road here, but it's like, let me hear what everybody else has to say. But this, this really is, is very tough. I want to get this across the finish line. I think having an 18-hole, hole course could be world-class. I, I keep going back to the fact that area down there, I think, is underutilized. It is not a conservation area. Every time I go in there, there's relatively nobody in there. I already see footprints in all the, all of the wetlands in there. I also have seen the kids pulling down a bunch of stuff in there. I've seen wood thrown across the, the brook, so people can, can move around back there. So, there's some better, some, some more developed trails, or some, some not well-developed trails. Like Mr. Minkar, I am struggling with that, specifically question one on the wetlands affidavit. So, I also want to hear what else has to say, but I will tell you, I, I think I'm probably going to vote in favor of this. I would, I would have more really concern about Hole One. I would have more really concern about hole three specifically, when we had the gentleman, I specifically had asked him about erosion in that area with the hill. That was my big concern, that it's going to end up down in the wetlands, and he doesn't think so. It's already a pretty beat-up area, and like, last time I went in there, it was still pretty muddy, and so stuff is already flowing in that area. So I think I'm probably leaning towards yes, but once again, I want to hear what everybody else has to say. I am more impressed now with the application than I was the first time around. I think they've cleaned a few things up, while the drawings weren't great, and we understand why. I think that the folks in Manchester actually probably moved me closer to being in favor of this. I don't say that very often, but it is, they were doing a really good job there.
Mr. Boucher?
I think that I have a clearer view on this application than the last time, even though I was confident in my position last time. I think I see things more clearly. Mr. Minkar brings up an interesting point, and that was one of the things that I had looked at, but again, in the context of this application, can the use be reasonably avoided? I think, as we look at this as a whole, we have a plan that was put in front of us, and they had their experts work with them, and this is what they're presenting. So I think there's going to be crossings. I think ultimately, to use the property, just like your example, somebody puts in a driveway, I mean, that's a different type of a thing, but they're taking a lot of care of how they're doing that. You know, there was testimony that there was, original design was, I think, less crossings than there are now. Again, this, and why I am not really, I'm concerned about the plan, but I'm not concerned about the exact plan, because I think we had an expert testify, you know, they hired experts for this, and this gentleman, even though he's working for the city, he has his own license, so he's not going to risk his accreditation or license for, just to make the city of Nashua happy. I think that the city needs to know what the truth is about this, and he gave that to them. So I believe that his testimony is credible. Now, when it gets to the planning board, my feeling is, is that our, if this were to pass, we're looking at approving an application that has nine crossings. It could go to the planning board, and they could somehow decide that there's going to be less crossings if that works out. What I'm saying is that it's a lesser degree. I'm not saying that that would happen, I'm just saying that, again, I'm not concerned, because this plan was designed specifically based on recommendations from the CONCON, how they felt they saw it, wetland scientists testified to, has expertise on this project. So I'm confident, more confident in this position that I have. And again, in general, I believe that, you know, that the five points of the special exception are met, and then the other points going down the line is based on the same theory as the fact that we have, you know, again, you mentioned number two and number four, least damaging, best practices, alternative proposal. I think, again, through testimony and what I've read from the wetland scientists, I think that goes a long way to justifying that. And then number four also. So I'm in the position that, you know, that I'm going to support this, this application.
Mr. Patrick, do you want to offer?
Sure. Yeah. You know, my view, when we talk about the first criteria for the wetlands, you know, the use or activity proposed and its attendant impacts cannot reasonably avoid it. I mean, of course, we can avoid them by not approving this, but I don't know that that's reasonable. I mean, it's a city park, you know, everyone should be able to use it. I think it's a reasonable use of the park. I think the, you know, we have the expert testimony that the wetlands will be minimally impacted. So to me, this meets the criteria.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. Just a question for staff of the chair. I'm still rookie, so just want to clarify something here. Special exception criteria number four, that's the nine criteria on the wetland special conditions, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just want to double check what that, what Mr. Boucher said. Yeah, so from what I'm hearing from my colleagues here, it sounds like if we could get more details, this might be a 5-0 vote, but it's going to be a very difficult vote. It's, I can see both sides of this, and I believe that criteria one, two, three, and five of the special criteria are met, but the wetland special conditions, that's still iffy. I appreciate that the applicant's trying to work with CONSCOM and provide details. It's just, I wish there were more details, so this is not going to be a comfortable vote either way.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's obviously a lot of passion on both sides of this. There's a lot of concerns. There's a lot of things about this that, you know, I think are maybe, you know, ultimately somewhat fears that probably won't come to bear if this does move forward. But I think, you know, most of us want to see as much preservation of our natural resources as possible, and yet, the city is also looking at dealing with, you know, a city park and trying to utilize that for many different ways. I mean, Roby Park has, you know, the ball fields, it's got the big playset, it's got the sledding hill, it's got the ice rink. It gets a lot of usage in those regards already, and it would be different if we were dealing with, like, well, they want to come in and put another rectangular field in there in that back part, and it would be like, whoa, this, you know, this doesn't make sense. I also, so this is actually a usage that in many ways, I think, will actually improve the usage and the quality of this area versus essentially the kind of like the, almost basically, from what I can tell, the non-maintained trails, or they're, you know, they're just kind of, you know, folks are doing whatever they need to, but there's not anything that's really being done to foster the usage, whereas now we're going to get some improved wetlands, crossings, there's going to be a lot more awareness. Yes, there might be a lot more people using it, but that's also that balance. I mean, many people, you know, use Mine Falls Park, and that's an amazing park, and part of it is, it's got the, you know, all these great trails, and it's very accessible. People can bike, people can run, walk, and there's even some soccer fields in the middle there. So I think this, to me, feels like it's about trying to find that balance, and I do think all the criteria are met. I think it's, I think especially number one, in the wetland special conditions, can get a little tricky when we say the use cannot reasonably be avoided. I appreciate Mr. Patrick's point. I think reasonable is the key word there, because, you know, we could certainly say, yes, it will be avoided if we don't approve this, or, you know, seek to see that it's not allowed, but I think it's reasonable to incorporate this golf course in this space, to allow actually a lot more usage by residents of the city. And I think, I actually think, again, that there'll be some net positive in terms of the care and the treatment of those wetlands, because there will be these crossings, and there will be a lot more opportunity for people to kind of do right by how they use that area. I do hope that the applicant looks at things like a little more critically like this, you know, we've talked a lot about it, hole three. So it seems that, you know, that's got a lot of concern about potential for erosion, future erosion issues. So can something be done to tweak that a bit, you know? And those, you know, those are the things, we're not going to try to design this. I put it out there as, obviously, it's been brought up by a concern by a number of folks, including some on the board here, so maybe there's something could be done to improve that a little bit, without really taking away anything from the quality of the park itself or the discourse, really. So I guess with all that being said, I am in favor. I do think there's reasonable concerns, and I, you know, there's certainly the opportunity for some of, you know, especially the intensity of usage and things, again, like trash and parking and anything else like that, to be brought up in the planning board process. So this, our approval is really very narrow here if it does pass, and that's just about working in the wetland buffer. There's, all the rest of this, it still has to, you know, go through the whole site plan and approval. So that, I welcome anybody with those, you know, questions and concerns and special opposition, to make sure you follow this along and attend and communicate to the planning board about whatever those concerns are. And there should be that more detailed plan, like Attorney Proman noted, that typically is what does get generated after this board hears something. So there's a, you know, it'll be a very detailed site plan with much more information and details there that can be, you know, reviewed and interpreted by anybody that's interested. So that's just a little bit of kind of my side note to those here. Yes?
Just one more question, I apologize. I did say it earlier in jest, but would it be appropriate to ask for a special condition for the donation of those grabbers on a regular basis, or is that beyond our capacity to ask for?
I mean, I think technically, we can put anything we want to for a condition, but I think we have to decide if it's, you know, reasonable and appropriate. And to me, it feels like it's going a little bit beyond what we're, you know, trying to decide on this. It's something that, again, maybe, you know, the applicant can consider as they're kind of coming into their final site plan, it might be much more appropriate to say, look, we're even doing this type of thing, you know?
Just want to double check.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's something different. Maybe it's like, you know, they have a few that are, that can be like, you know, paid and unlocked and used for a day for a dollar or something like that, and returned, you know? Maybe there's other ways to make them available without, you know, the fear of theft. I don't know. There's probably things that somebody created.
So like Aldi grabbers, basically. If you bring them back, you get your quarter back.
Yeah. Anybody want to have any more comment or discussion? Otherwise, I think maybe we're ready for a motion. Mr. Minkar?
I'd like to make a motion, the application of the city of Nashua at Elsbright Brook Road, Roby Park, requesting a special exception from land use codes 190-134 and 190-112 to work in a critical wetland buffer to remove trees and brush, install nine wooden pedestrian bridges, tee pads, disc chain baskets, directional signage, wetland markers, and trash barrels for a proposed 18-hole golf, disc golf course be approved. We find that the proposed use is listed in the table of uses. It is a recreational use that is allowed in this district. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, though it is noted it is an additional use. There will be more traffic. We don't find that it would be undue. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal system. In fact, it'll have little or no impact to those systems whatsoever. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled, which I will go through. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of the character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. Yet, in fact, there is currently a city park, it is part of a city park, there's active recreational use there, and there's also, as was noted, a golf course on the adjacent property. With regard to the wetland special conditions, we find that the use cannot be reasonably avoided. As importantly was noted, reasonable is the key word here. Of course, any use could be avoided if it wasn't moved forward whatsoever. But as noted, this is part of a city park. It's an unutilized portion of the city park. It's not conservation land, and what is proposed is a more active use of that area, which would involve impact to the wetlands and wetland buffers to some extent, regardless of whether it was an 18-hole disc golf course or some other use or a more active trail system, as an example. The least damaging and best practical alternatives is proposed. Based on the testimony that received, this is a project that has gone through multiple iterations and multiple meetings, and it does appear, based on testimony, that attempts were made to minimize impacts of the best practical alternatives or impact utilized or proposed. Acceptable mitigation is incorporated to minimize loss. Again, we have testimony to that effect in the record, in terms of replantings in particular. It's necessary for the deductive use of adjoining buildable land. In this case, this is land within this portion of the park that's outside of the wetlands or wetland buffers. And again, has been noted, in order to utilize those areas for what's proposed, some level of crossing of wetlands and intrusions into buffer areas is required. No rare or endangered species would be impacted, again, based on the expert testimony that has been provided. The likelihood of there being endangered, or rare or endangered species in this area is remote. Adequate erosion and sedimentation control methods. Again, based on the testimony, there was concern expressed related to the potential for erosion, but we're satisfied that the erosion control measures that will be put in place are adequate. Proposed activities shall not significantly impair wetland capacity for wildlife and fishery functions. Key here is the word significant. There will most certainly be some impact, but it does not appear, again, based on the evidence that was submitted and the testimony that we've received, that it would be significant. The project shall not impair the stability of the water bodies' bank. With regard to the water bodies' bank, this being the stream, the bridges that are proposed do appear to be a best practice and would have a minimal impact on the stability of the bank. The wetland and buffer function of the distortion capacity and storage shall not be impaired, and once again, based on the testimony submitted, the amount of impervious surface area added to it would be minimal, very, very minimal, which should not impact the absorption capacity of the area. So for those reasons, propose that this application be approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we have the ability for special conditions to have the applicant take another look at hole three before they do their final application to the planning board? Just as an advisory? I think we'd like to get noted in there, we're concerned about hole number three specifically, and they should take a look at it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Attorney Proman had kind of nodded when I was talking about it a little bit ago, but yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
I would accept adding that as an advisory condition, as a amendment.
Thank you.
And was there a second then?
No.
I'll second the motion. I do want, I'll just put it in like commentary or discussion after the motion. I also want to note regarding the stability of a water bodies' bank, that actually by installing some of these bridges, there's even much less likelihood of, you know, direct foot traffic damaging the existing kind of stream bed crossings and those, that, you know, that part of the water bodies' bank. So I think it'll actually, if anything not, it will be, instead of impairing, it'll actually be most likely improving. So I just thought that's worth having somewhere in our record as at least commentary. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? And that passes unanimously, 5-0. As probably everybody knows, and we already were through this before, but there is a 30-day window of appeal, that if anybody believes this board heard, especially in terms of making a legal decision or acting in some way that we shouldn't have, that is an option, but city's welcome to proceed with your plans, and hopefully, good luck with the rest of things.
Appreciate that.
We do have a little bit of business that the board needs to finish up with, so if you're welcome to stay, but if you want to have conversation, we ask that you find your way out in the hall. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Do you have that on that one?
The hollows or whatever one that was, the little map one that you had?
Maybe you want this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in Massachusetts, not the hollows.
Okay. If, sorry, can, we just need, we want to get finished, so.
The hollows.
Attorney Proman, if you wouldn't mind just closing the door when you go out, that would be great. Thank you. So we don't have regional impact because our next meeting is three weeks out.
Correct. We have an extra week in the schedule, and as of right now, I believe we have four cases. I don't believe any of them right now are regional impact.
All right.
We'll forward the agenda when it's ready.
Yeah. Okay, so we do have the minutes from two weeks ago, from the October. Yeah. Okay, so, we do have the minutes from two weeks ago, from the October eighth meeting. Did anybody have any?
No. I was going to move to approve them, I don't have any others, sorry.
Yeah, and you would be the voting member for this one, so.
I don't see any issues with them.
Okay.
Yeah, I move we approve the minutes.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Sorry, sorry.
I wasn't going to count your hands.
I used to do the same thing all the time.
And I don't think we have any other business. You did pass out the advanced look at the twenty-twenty-five schedule. I think we have the one meeting moved due to Veterans Day. Is there anything else in there?
I don't believe so.
I think that was the only thing I just kind of scanned quick.
At the next meeting, and I believe I forwarded to the board some training opportunities. There's also a little test there that is actually pretty fun. We all, a couple of us took it, and it only takes a few minutes. Andrew and I took it and-
I got ninety percent, baby. Do you think we'll pass?
Oh, yeah. It's a fun little test. I thought it was entertaining, so it's a good little check to see what you know about zoning and things. So, if everybody could take it, that would greatly appreciate it. We're going for a grant, and that's one of the requirements. So, if everyone could take it and just do it with a certificate, and email it back to us, that'd be phenomenal.
I wouldn't mind a remind, I wouldn't mind getting a reminder if you feel like, I mean, I don't know if everybody else has done it yet or not, but it's the kind of thing that get behind me and then I'll-
I figured I better study up, I didn't want to fail.
Yeah.
I would be very embarrassed if I failed.
Exactly.
What was the due date on that again? I'm sorry?
What was the due date? You guys knew that, didn't you?
We need it by, it's early November. I forgot the date, maybe November eighth or tenth. I don't have it with me, but I can, I can remind everybody tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll help you study. And it's really quick, you said, right?
It's a fun little test. I mean, I only took, it only took me like four or five minutes to take it, but it is fun to take.
That's a good point, right?
Educational as well, too.
Right. We want the city to get the designations.
Yeah, that's what we do.
All right. Is there a move to adjourn? Mr. Sylvia? Yep. Seconded by Mr. Minkar. All in favor? All right. You're adjourned.
Is the twelfth our next meeting?
Pardon?
Are we meeting next, the twelfth?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll be an extra week in the, in the schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.